That's what I heard.
So Sandy got the whole hour forty-five minutes to... Oh, the, uh... The paddles?
The paddles.
Yeah, the... They got recalled.
Yeah, the AEDs, yeah.
Yeah, the AEDs. So what's the status on that, because she asked, because hers isn't in there either?
Um, we'll probably have to get her some.
I mean, I can understand the chambers not having hers, but we probably don't...
No, we probably should have them at the library.
Is that something Sandy brought us?
Yeah, well, we'll get some.
I told her I would pass that number?
Yep. Morning. I'm taking your normal spot because I have to control the power point.
Do you want me to sit here or back here?
You can sit wherever you want.
You go to the back of the chair.
Wherever you want.
If you want it.
Wherever you want.
Okay, thanks.
Heidi's just opened this morning, so it was...
It's May first, yeah.
It was the inaugural batch.
That's right, May first.
These were day old. We knew Sandy was bringing them day old.
Clean grease.
That's true. Thought there was some rodent hair on the one I ate.
We can get started whenever.
Is this an official meeting?
All you gotta do is call the meeting director and do a roll call, and then you can just turn over to me.
Make sure she will start the meeting at ten o'clock. And Mike, or Suzie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor Prokhorov Salvido.
Here. And I'll look for a quick motion to excuse Mayor DeWort.
No, I'm...
Does that support?
All support.
Suzie, roll call on that. I'm not gonna mess up again. I'd rather ask than say I didn't do it.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Reluctant, yes.
And Mayor Prokhorov Salvido.
Yes. With that, go ahead, Mike. I guess we'll start with you.
Sure. Um, so, uh, in accordance with the provisions of the Lowell City Charter, I'm pleased to present for you your review and consideration, the budget for the current fiscal year and the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which begins on July first, two thousand and twenty-one. Last year with the COVID- nineteen pandemic, it was providing many unknowns. The economy fell rapidly, and there was certain uncertainty everywhere. We were preparing for a doomsday scenario as there were too many unknowns. I'm pleased to state that we are seeing a recovery for the most part as the vast scene is now available and more people are taking advantage of it. That said, there are still many unknowns, and this is an ever-fluid situation that we have to be prepared for. From the past year, we saw approximately a six million dollar increase of taxable value of real property. This has resulted in a modest increase of our overall real property tax revenue to the general fund of about fifty thousand dollars. A large portion of the taxable value captured went to the Downtown Development Authority due to the opening of the adult marijuana facilities. Last year, we projected a significant reductions in sales tax revenue, Act Fifty-One gas tax revenue, and our light and power payment and loan taxes. The reductions turned out not to be near where projected. In addition, we also received a number of allocations from the CARES Act. This year, we anticipate a significant amount from the American Recovery Plan. The city has also received its first excise tax payment this year for marijuana retail facilities. The payment we received is dependent on the number of facilities we have. The twenty-eight thousand dollar, the twenty-three, twenty-eight thousand dollars and one, twenty-eight thousand and one dollar we received was immediately transferred to the local street fund to alleviate for the road projects slated. I should note, the Downtown Development Authority received a hundred and six thousand dollars more in property taxes than budgeted for. This year, the DDA anticipates an additional fifty thousand dollars more than received from the current fiscal year. Property taxes could be impacted at a later date due to the possibility of commercial businesses appealing their property taxes to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. I would have to believe that our restaurants and hotels would do that. If this occurs, I sense this will be more of an impact to the Downtown Development Authority than the general fund. For the last several, for the, for the several years, the city has made major changes to employee-provided health care. The constant rise in health care costs and the new federal laws have required the city to look at the issue every year. Currently, the city has Priority Health as our health care provider. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, we saw a six-point-seven percent increase from when we switched plans in July of two thousand and eighteen. This year, we anticipate a six-point-three-three percent increase. That said, I evaluated other plans, and at this time, I don't know, I do not recommend changing. However, we are looking at making modifications to our current plan, which could reduce our costs eleven percent from the projected increases in cost. Additionally, I will only proceed if it minimally affects our employees, and I'm researching this right now as we speak. The city's health care will be something to continue to evaluate annually as I'm continuing to look at plans that provide quality service to the employees and keep our costs down as much as possible. The city currently provides retiree health care for five years only and up to age sixty-five. At that point, the employee would enroll in a Medicare supplemental policy. Two years ago, the city received twenty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the sale of the twenty-five-sixty Bowes Road property. Since then, we've established a separate fund we subsidize to prepare for future retirees and pay for the current retiree health care plans. At the moment, we have four retirees we are currently providing health care for. In the next four years, we have five employees eligible to retire and receive retiree health care from the city. The retirement health care contributions will be significantly high when those employees do retire. In addition to the contributions I made, I budgeted five thousand dollars for each of the those employees eligible to retire so we can begin to have some funds set aside for their retirement health care. We have negotiated with both unions and will not provide retirement health care to employees who retire after June thirty, two thousand and thirty-five, and June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five for all non-union positions. Two employees will have retirement health care savings accounts whereby the city will be subsidizing a percentage of base pay for them for this, for this purpose. All non-union employees hired after September sixth, two thousand and sixteen, have no subsidy or provision for retirement health care, the same as the matter for all union employees hired after July one, two thousand and twenty. Retirement unfunded liabilities are a concern for the administration. Currently, we are sixty, approximately sixty percent funded with an unfunded liability of approximately three-point-six million dollars in our Michigan Municipal Employment Retirement System account. Two years ago, we were flagged by the Michigan Department of Treasury for being under sixty percent, and we requested a waiver to avoid filing a corrective action plan. At the end of the last fiscal year, we had approximately two hundred thousand dollars in revenue over expenditures that we could have added to our fund balance. Since our fund balance was approximately a million dollars and thirty-three percent of our general fund budget, we made an additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment to our unfunded pension liability. This fall, all employees hired before July one, two thousand and twenty, had their future pension multiplier bridged down from two-point-five percent to two-point-oh percent. We closed the traditional plan for all employees hired after July one, two thousand and twenty, and now contribute ten percent of their base wage to a defined contribution account. On July one, our rate of return will be reduced from seven-point-seven-five percent to seven-point-three-five percent. This will increase our liability and accelerate payments by a significant amount in the beginning of the fiscal year. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just take a step back. When we closed the plan in December, our, our payments, because we closed the plan, actually went up three thousand dollars a month because it had, we had to account for the unfunded li, we had, we had, we had to make up for the gap loss by closing the pension because it accelerated costs. So we saw about a three thousand dollar a month increase beginning January first. And we also anticipate, I believe, about another thousand dollars a month, maybe a little bit more coming after July one with the, with the, with the changing of the plans.
Thousand in addition to the...
Correct, yeah.
How long does that, it, anticipate that pay that escalation for, right?
Well, it's gonna go up every year. I just got a new, I just got a new ballpark projection for MERS on Tuesday. Um, and I haven't looked at it so much, but we were anticipating by twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, close to a million dollars in payments from the city just for the unfunded pension liability, and then it was gonna go down. Um, but looking at the numbers, I think because we closed the plan, it's significantly less. I think the highest year is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I think we're about just over four hundred and forty thousand right now, which, that we pay out of all of our account, all of our funds. But it, it didn't go up nearly as much as I had anticipated, so I'm gonna, when I, next week, I plan on getting in touch with MERS and going over it. Because I, because looking at it, it, it's, the way it's, the way I'm looking at it now, it, it's really... We could, we could probably extend our five-year payment, we could extend five years to get that unfunded liability to, to pay it back, but it, it really, I'm starting to look at it, and it doesn't, almost doesn't make sense to do. Um, it almost just, the way I'm reading the, the, the information, it almost seems like we should just stay the course of what we're doing. We've closed the plans, and we probably, you know, the, the idea of pension bonding and all that may not need to do it, which, which is good because that does create risk, but I'm gonna, um, but that also, that also, that also means that they're not gonna lower the rate of return anymore on the, on the pension, which I, I I don't believe is gonna be the case. I'm sure it'll get, you know, I'm sure it'll get reduced again in a couple of years, so. It, it's, it's a, uh... It's bad, but it, when I looked at the information we got back, it didn't look as bad as I thought, so. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into that later in the week, so, um, so continuing, um, we probably will have to for, you know, we probably will be fought, forced to file a corrective action plan at some point. That being the case, we've already made the steps that we, that we, by us closing the plan, and, um, by us closing the plan to new hires, we've taken our corrective action steps. So even if we, if that comes up, it's really not, it's really not gonna be much of an issue because we've already done it. Um, but one of the, one of the positive things is, is fifty years from now, you know, the city will have no pension liability. Currently, we have about an overall liability of about eleven million dollars throughout the life of the pension system. So, um, fifty years from now, you got, you get that to zero, which is pretty significant. But in the meantime, we're gonna still look at how we can manage and make controllable payments to make the, manage the debt as we go forward. So I'll be bringing you more information here pretty soon. Um, staffing, this, this budget includes no loss to our full-time staff. We had three, three retirements this fiscal year, and we eliminated the City Hall administrative assistant position. The DPW will actually replace their sexton coming May, this week. And there's also a second utility worker position they, they need to fill that's been budgeted for the last two years, and we just haven't filled. We are proposing to make the police detective position full-time. Chris is gonna talk more about this in a little bit, but the workload is becoming unmanageable, and with the increased revenue from our marijuana application fees and proposed pilots, I believe we can fund this position from two different categories. Um, so we did, we did budget this position for the second six months of the fiscal year, and we will not activate the position until we determine how much we would receive from the marijuana excise tax allocation. We did budget for a part-time City Hall administrative assistant for the upcoming year. This budget reflects the goals and concerns of the city council. Following the border review meetings, the city's taxable value for this general fund actually improved, resulting in an increase in property tax revenue to the general fund of fifty thousand dollars. In order to achieve, achieve the balanced budget, several contributions from other funds are needed. The general fund for several years has charged the other funds administrative service fees, which in essence, administrative service costs that are charged for city facility usage along with city staff. We will still continue to do that. In addition, I'm projecting a hundred thousand dollars from our share of the marijuana excise tax. I'm also projecting fifty-five thousand dollars in annual marijuana application fees. I'm also projecting approximately fifty thousand dollar increase in the Lowell Light and Power Pilot from the anticipated, that, from what was anticipated last fiscal year. This year, I budgeted the entire City Hall bond payment to occur from the Downtown Development Authority. This freed up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund. This allowed us to set aside retirement health care costs we mentioned previously. We've also budgeted an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the local street fund, which, this is a seventy thousand dollar increase from previous fiscal years. This year, we will make a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the equipment fund to stabilize it. This is substantially less than what we've done in, in years past. The city will also make a budgeted expenditure to the Lowell Area Fire Services Authority that is consistent with the guidelines of the agreement. We anticipate a contribution of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. This year, we also created a separate fund for future, for funding future fire capital expenses. We will be allocating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, seventy-five thousand of which was from last year's revenue over expenditures. So if you recall, we took a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the pension, seventy-five thousand for the fire truck. So we will be making that transfer to the fire capital fund, and we will be contributing our share of the fire truck that we have to, that we have to purchase later in the year. This fiscal year, we were able to construct multiple streets. We repaved Elizabeth, Suffolk, Howard, and Riverside Drive. In the upcoming fiscal year, we will begin repaving for Amity Street with the assistance from the Downtown Development Authority and the United States Community Block Development Grant Program. We will also receive road funding from the state of Michigan when we complete a sewer improvement project on Foreman from Beach to Hudson Street. In addition, the Stormwater Asset Management Study is completed, and we've identified many capital projects to complete over the next fifteen years. One major project we are looking on is Washington and Monroe Streets and complete major underground utility projects on almost one-and-a-half-mile area of utility at street. We hope to begin this project with Monroe Street in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two and Washington Street in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. The project cost is in excess of seven million dollars, and we are in the process of seeking financing through the United States Development of, I'm sorry, United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Program. In the upcoming fiscal year, we also plan to repay Valley Vista from Bowes to Main, Roberta Jane, Faith, and Hefron Streets. Since two thousand and six, the city has modified water rates ten times and sewer rates seven times. We had a rate adjustment in July two thousand and twenty. We are starting to see more processed water coming into the wastewater treatment plant due to light house coming back online. In years past, this caused a financial strain to the wastewater fund. However, revenue is improving. Rates need to be adjusted to provide adequate funds to maintain the system. A rate study conducted through the Stormwater Asset Management Program recommended an adjustment to the residential customer by a dollar forty-six, which was six percent to the monthly ready-to-serv charge, also a fourteen-cent increase to their consumption charge per thousand gallons. The residential sewer customer would have seen a forty-nine cent increase to their monthly ready-to-serv charge and an eight-cent increase to their, which was two percent consumption charge per thousand gallons. This fiscal year, we made those changes. For the upcoming year, we are recommending a two-and-a-half percent increase to the water ready-to-serv and commodity charges. We are also recommending two percent increase to the water, to the sewer readiness to serve and commodity charges, and these come from the rate study provided by the Sogmar. Based upon the actual figures for the first nine months and projections for the remainder of, of current, this, current budget year fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, this will, will close with a variance in the general fund. As I mentioned, our revenues came in much higher than originally forecasted, and specifically, at the end of the year, we, we anticipate a surplus of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, during the, during the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year, city had a number of accomplishments totaling four hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars in new investment, which included three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and four dollars to repay Elizabeth, Suffolk, Howard, Riverside, which was paid for out of the DDA fund, major street fund, and local street funds. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars to make repairs to the panel of digester number three at the wastewater plant and six thousand dollars, six thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars to replace mower number fifty-four. By charter of the city of Lowell, they can levy up to twenty mils for general operating purposes. Currently, the city levies one million, millage, and that is for general operating. For many years, the city has levied fifteen-point-seven mils. This is below the seventh, well, this has changed. It's about sixteen-point-six-three mils. We actually did have a heavily rollback this year. Um, but it's not gonna affect our millage rate because we're still under the, under our headly cap. So we didn't, we didn't, so it really doesn't affect us at all. But the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one was developed using the following assumptions. Revenues are calculated based upon a millage rate of fifteen-point-seven mils. Constitutional state revenue sharing and Act Fifty-One gas tax is calculated according to Michigan Department of Management and Budget projections. Interest rates continue to remain low, and services will remain, um, the same or through, through efficiency. Revenues in the general fund are expected to show an increase from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one from the current year's approved budget of three million, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Our projected revenue for the current fiscal year will come in approximately three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars higher than we projected. Um, we also have, we also, I'm gonna get into it in a minute, but I'll show how, where we get all our funds from. Budgeted expenditures, budgeted expenditures from the city, from the general fund for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two are expected to be three million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and thirty-four cents, which is approximately forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars more than projected for the current fiscal year. Of the actual general fund revenue, approximately twenty-point-two percent or approximately seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars of general fund expenditures will be transferred to other funds to subsidize their expenditures. I'm not gonna get into all the specifics of all the, all the projects. We'll talk about that later, but, um... I'm making, making the following recommendations to the city council that while we maintain the current millage and collect fifteen-point-seven mils for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. And the reasons for that are, the city council can increase the millage rate to sixteen-point-six-four without a vote of the people as a result of the heavily rollback. Going beyond that to the charter limit would require a vote of the people. The budget as presented reflects the revenue and expenditures to balance the budget and provide public services. Overall, city services will remain the same, but are offset by administrative service charges from other city funds to assist with administrative costs for providing services. That being said, city will continue to evaluate strategies for generating revenue to replace local streets and underground infrastructure. Also, additional technology and possibly changing our work procedures may lead to financial efficiencies. I'd like to thank two employees, outstanding employees for their work in putting together the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. City Treasurer Sue Owen and Deputy Treasurer Lori Gerard have done an outstanding job and have worked many long hours to make this document possible. The city of Lowell is very fortunate to have these two individuals serving our city. The entire staff has worked diligently with much thought and care to put together this budget. What work needs to be done, we've accomplished much in the city, and the positive changes in the community are proof we are making progress. As we move forward into the new fiscal year, we will continue to look for efficiencies, partnerships, and structural changes to better serve the residents and businesses in our city. The city staff and I look forward to assisting you in your review and considering, in consideration of the proposed budgets, and if you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Just real quick, I'm gonna just break down, I do this every year, where, where our money comes from. So forty-three percent of our money, of our general fund revenue comes from real property taxes. That's our biggest, that's our biggest, uh, piece of the pie. We also get about eleven percent of our revenue through state revenue sharing, and nearly eleven, around eleven percent from Lowell and Power and their pilot. We get about nine percent each from the DDA transfer administrative services fees. Um, then we get about a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars from personal property tax. This year, which is, we normally don't get, I did put aside a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the, of what we're supposed to get through the ARP, um, into the general fund, and then also, uh... I also set aside a hundred thousand dollars projected for the marijuana excise tax, and then an additional fifty-five thousand dollars in marijuana application fees. Um, two percent, we do collect, two percent of our revenue comes from the property tax administration fee, and when I, I'll explain what that is. That's basically the charge we make for us to process all the other taxes we collect for. So we collect for many, for the schools, the county, um, the community colleges. So that, that assessment has been done for many years, and that, and that assessment has, is for our costs, basically to make, to make up for our costs, for get, making sure that those, those, those taxes are captured properly. Um, and then also, the, the museum has their millage, um, which I believe is point, about a quarter of a mil, and then we transfer that, we use that for the museum. So, if you look by service, twenty-seven percent of our general fund expenditures are for the police department. Um, City Hall bond is the second closest, about eight-point-five-four percent. Eight-point-six percent is for Public Works and the treasurer. Um, my office is about four-point-six percent. Um, local street transfer that we make is about six-point-eight-three percent. Um, and then, can go through all of them, but there, it's broken down. Our biggest expenditure by service that is police, our biggest by classification is personnel costs. Total personnel costs out of the city budget is about forty-six-point-six percent. The second largest, um, is transfers, where it's about twenty-point-two percent, and then professional contractual is about ten-point-three percent. Operating costs are twelve percent. Capital projects out of the general fund are nine-point-one percent, and then supplies is another, just under two percent. So personnel costs in every municipal budget, it's always gonna be your largest percentage of costs. Um, so it's, no, nothing we do is really out of the ordinary from what you would see in other communities' budgets, so. Any questions at this point? All right, I'm gonna move on, um, real quick. I'm gonna just go, start going through department budgets. Um, first budget I'm gonna go to is the city council budget. Um... Basically, your budget never really changes much. Um, I know um, the mayor is gonna try and reach out to the Compensation Commission to see if he can get us more, get the council a couple of dollars more per meeting. Um, I know he wants, I know he's gonna be reaching out to, to them very soon about that. So you have your temporary salaries, which is roughly the same as the year prior. Your budget doesn't really change much. Um, we put four thousand dollars in this year for conventions and, and conferences. Um, we've only spent about four hundred and ninety-five dollars this year. Um, we do put aside twenty-five hundred dollars for community promotion, um, which I believe usually is your share of the, of the community cleanup. We put about five thousand dollars in miscellaneous. And we haven't, we, like I said, we haven't really changed these numbers since I've been here. Any questions? Going to the city manager's budget. Um, just so you know, we do, we do have specific line items where some of the revenues come into. So you'll see fifty-five thousand dollars to the, as, for the marijuana application fee. We do, we do charge, we do charge it to the city manager's account as revenue. Um, we also, sixty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, which is the administrative services. There's three different administrative service expenditures. So the first expenditure goes to the manager's line item, which is, that's the amount that we, that we, that we've calculated. Um, salaries, as you recall, seventy percent of my salary and benefits come from the general fund. The remains thirty percent come from the DDA. Um, biggest increase in costs this year is the pension costs. Um, as I've said, because we closed the plan and we're seeing a lower rate of return, pension costs are going higher. Um, also, um... Trying to find it. Oh... Ware Road should be in this line item. I'm trying to find, okay, it's down below. Okay, so the cost for Ware Road, it's not, it's not broken down, but if you look at the professional... The cost for Where Road, it's not, it's not broken down, but if you look at the professional services line item, it says fifty-two thousand dollars. I set aside about fifteen thousand dollars for my normal professional service, but I also intend to use a, a large portion of that money. Towards the, if we do have to have a actuarial analysis for MERS. We anticipate it's going to be about ten thousand dollars. So I normally only use about maybe five thousand dollars annually for that. But also this year for Where Road. We haven't, we haven't anticipated cost for the upcoming fiscal year, thirty-seven thousand dollars for the drilling we'll have to do. The next fiscal year, we're probably going to have about ninety thousand dollars worth of costs. And that's not budgeted, won't be budgeted till next year because we're going to have to go off-site. And try and, and, and put wells in outside the area to determine whether or not. The, the issues from the Where Road site have actually migrated elsewhere. So I tried to hold that off for a year and I was able to, so we're going to, we're going to do that next year. Because we've had a lot of, we've spent a lot of money on Where Road up to this point. And then communications, that's my cell phone, really hasn't changed much. Travel expenses, that's my vehicle allowance. Conference and conventions, I did increase it back to my normal amount. I normally, we normally set aside four thousand dollars for conferences, conventions and my dues. And last year we had, we only put it at twenty-five hundred because we didn't, and I didn't go to any conferences. And this year I, I do, I do plan on at least going to the state conferences when they do start up again. I, I probably, I'm not, I haven't made the decision whether I'm going to go to the national conference yet this year. We don't even know if we're going to have the national conference. But I, I went back to my normal, the normal amount that we put in every year before, before this year. And then five thousand for miscellaneous expenses, which is what I've done. So the only, the only real changes for the manager's budget are. The increased costs for, the cost for Where Road and personnel, really the pension costs. So any questions so far? I'm going to go next to. City Attorney. So this year. I, for the upcoming fiscal year, I budgeted sixty-five thousand dollars for our city attorney. And then an additional ten thousand dollars for labor relations. I don't anticipate us hopefully not having to use the labor relations attorney much. However, this year we did spend a lot more than we anticipated, mainly because we hadn't settled the labor contracts yet. And also we did have with the unemployment case of our former chief of police. That did cost us some in that aspect and there may be an appeal. I don't know if there is, we, we have money set aside. And then the professional services really is our Dickinson Wright account and also whatever we use for Mary Ann Sabo. I hope this year we don't have to use them as much. We have used them a lot. We've had a lot of issues where we, we've needed the attorney. I can never truly. I can really never tell you how much it's going to be at the beginning, at the beginning of the year. I can only project. Hopefully this year we don't have to, it won't, it will be less than what I have budgeted. And hopefully that we just don't need to use the attorneys as much as, as we've had since, you know, in every year I've been here. So any questions on that? Okay, moving on. Department two sixty-five, City Hall, that'll be the last one I talk about for now. So we do pay a portion of some employee salaries out of that line item. Previously, when we had the administrative assistant, we pay, we paid a percentage, I believe. Thirty percent of her pay came from the general fund and a lot of it came from this line item. But we also have whenever the, whenever the DPW employees do work in City Hall, they charge it. They charge their time to this account. So that's why you see personnel costs as they are. The only, then we have our office supplies, which never really changes. Postage, which went up a little bit this year. Operating supplies, that's basically all the things we need that we use in City Hall. We did set aside fifteen thousand dollars for building improvements, both for this year and next year. I know we need to do some work to the, to the, to the, to the windows, to the windows up here. I also know that we do need to do some work to the, by the bays. The, the wood, the wood frames are starting to deteriorate, so I know we do have to do some work to that. So we did set some money aside for that. Any questions?
Yeah, on the maintenance and repair of this building. By what I see would need to be replaced or repaired and we don't really have a clue what's behind it.
Right.
I just think the fifteen's a little light, wouldn't you like?
Okay.
I think you're light by about five thousand.
Okay. We could, we could probably.
I would just assume we, we do it right.
Dan can respond, he's.
Well, I think we're like, that's, that's okay because we have money budgeted right now to do some of this work. We want to get started now, which will carry it over as well.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking at, on that side wall, we don't know what burn lines are sitting behind.
We do not.
Cannot see, we just know we've got water damage coming in from window sills. As I had in behind, I would just assume that that account up to know we're covered so we can do it correctly.
And the worst case scenario is, the worst case scenario is we have to go into our fund balance to do it. Which is probably, we have a million dollars sitting there, but you're right, we, we will. I, I agree with you. I, I agree with you. We don't know. So, but if, if the worst case scenario is we have to go into our fund balance a little bit to do it, I would think that's a good use of the fund balance. Okay, on to our next person, which is Suzie.
Okay.
I want to go back up.
I'm going to start off with elections and first of all, we did receive a grant for five thousand dollars for COVID. And that had to be spent all towards election and went towards payroll and different expenses, PPE equipment. And then we go to salaries, so I have twenty-five hundred dollars budgeted for election workers for the upcoming year.
How many elections do we have, just one?
I think we're going to end up having two, August and November.
Okay.
Going on to operating supplies, twelve hundred dollars. That is for absentee ballots, voter ID cards, envelopes, things like that. Three hundred dollars is budgeted for election equipment, repair and maintenance. We have two hundred and fifty dollars that is going towards conferences and conventions. Seven hundred and ten dollars for printing expenses such as notices that we have to put into the ledger for upcoming elections. We have seven hundred and ten dollars for Mastercards, voter ID cards. And then five hundred and fifty dollars for miscellaneous expenses. Such as like election source, who use them, they help us with our ballot chart that we have to do for testing of all the election equipment. Prior to each election. And from there, we're going to go on to the clerks department. And, no, excuse me, we're going on to Lowell Cable TV. Cable administration expenses, there's four thousand dollars there that we automatically. Are provided a grant there and that is for the administration expenses that I do. Getting all of the grant packets together and, you know, attending the meetings, minutes, things like that. Then into the clerks department, salaries, sixty-five percent of that is for myself and Deputy Clerk Amy. Six hundred dollars for communications for my cell phone. Four hundred dollars for travel expenses. Forty-five hundred for conferences and conventions that both Amy and I are required to go to to keep our certifications up. See, we have eight thousand for printing expenses and that would be for public notices that have to go into the ledger.
Yes, that does include MUNICODE, yeah. Yeah, we use, we use this lineup from MUNICODE. So every year, we, any ordinances we pass during the year, July one, we take those ordinances. We cut, we update them on the MUNICODE, which then goes on the website and updates it on the website. So it's about a, three, I believe it's like a three thousand dollar expense this year.
And then going on to a thousand for miscellaneous expenses and that would be for any dues that we have to pay for. Clerk organizations, like Kent County Municipal Clerk. And then from there, we're going to move right on into planning and zoning. There's ten thousand dollars, now this is revenue received, right? Ten thousand dollars revenue received, that would be for site plan.
Yes.
Retainers.
Yep. Yeah, it's the, it's the escrow.
Okay, yes, ten thousand dollars there. Eighteen thousand, eight seventy-six, that is part of mine and Amy's salary as well, okay? And then we will go right to one thousand dollars is budgeted for conferences and conventions. And that is more for the planning commissioners, if they want to attend any training, they can go to that. And a hundred dollars is budgeted for printing and again, that would go for notices that I have to put in paper. And I think that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Sue?
Mike, you have something about the webpage, something on the webpage. Do you have in our budget this year to look at overhauling our webpage or any considerations on?
So we did, I guess I have to understand what the problems are with the webpage. We did update the webpage two years ago. We did, we got a whole new website, we, we went to a whole new website. And, I mean, I know, I think the biggest thing is it probably just needs, there's probably some information that just hasn't gotten onto the website yet.
Yeah, well, like park information, that's.
That's, yeah, that probably, that really probably isn't really going to be a cost, that's more just. I know the park, the parks board is putting that information together right now and once they have that, it's, all they got to do is get it to me and all they got to do is copy it and put it on the website. It's, you know, I know there's, you know, one of the things that happened was when we did the, when we migrated to the new website. Basically, we take all the information from before. We migrate it over, but we did add things to the website that we did, weren't putting on before. I try to, I keep that up the best I can. We try, you know, one of the things we do, we, we, we're very good about is making sure we get information like on. Me, you know, certain, you know, meetings, things of that nature, things that are going on, we try and get that stuff up at least on the news sites. I know that we probably need to go through some of the, I know a lot of the transition happened when we transitioned from Rich to Dan. So a lot of things that Rich was going to put up on the website, we never got up on the website for public works. So we're, you know, we, we know that, so there, there are some information that obviously needs to be updated. So I don't necessarily think that needs, we, we need a, we're going to, we're going to be spending a lot of money, it's more going to be just our time. So.
Is that something that the new part-time person we're going to hire downstairs could help with too?
I mean, I could show him how to do it, it's, yeah, it, you know.
I'm just trying to think that, you know, you've got enough on your plate.
Yeah, and, and, and really it's the, the part-time person that we've had really is helping them out. Because they're, that person helps them with their stuff. So I don't know how much more, I mean, she works twenty hours a week and she pretty much helps with the, she does a lot of the stuff that Luann used to do. And we, we kind of, we kind of brought her to, to alleviate them with what they were doing. So I don't know if that's, quite frankly, if I had an intern, this would be stuff I would have an intern do. But I don't have an intern. Maybe I need an intern. But. A lot, you know, a lot of the stuff that with the website, it's either me or Suzie getting it up. And it's, it's just a matter of, you know, one of the, one of the joys of working in a small town is you wear a lot of hats. And, and, you know, if, if, if we were a larger city, we'd actually have a department. That would focus as part of their job, the website and, and the Facebook pages and all that. We just, we just don't have that and it's, it's a matter of.
And I think some of the issue is, is that people are so used to, I need to see it today.
Yeah.
You know, and you wait months to get something updated or something like that, then it seems like, well, gee, what are they doing?
I know.
Not that you don't have anything to do with it, Marty says, again, it's.
Yeah. I under, I understand, yeah, I understand.
We shouldn't have introduced the intern line, is that a possibility?
I could, it could be, yeah, it's something I could do. I would get an MPA, yeah, I would get an MPA student. I mean, it's something we could consider.
And put all that on them.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of cities do that. A lot of smaller communities will bring an intern in. And.
Well, Mike says we're working with Davenport on the showboat and maybe something that they may do from an intern base to help. Us as, as towards their.
That might not be a bad idea. That might not be a bad idea.
I'm going to have to reach out and because today's age and technology, Jim's right, people want it now.
I know.
It just would save a lot of grief and headache.
Yep. No, I, I agree. I agree. Alright, on to Treasury.
Treasurer?
Yep.
The city treasurer budget, if, if you look at the top, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's a revenue we receive from the other funds and administrative services fee. It's a calculation we do at the end of the year. And salaries, a hundred percent of my salary and sixty percent of the deputy treasurer's salary. Going down to supplies, fifteen hundred dollars for tax bill paper and envelopes. We send our taxes out in-house, which has saved the city a lot of money. And so fifteen hundred for supplies, nineteen thousand dollars for the audit fees. And I have a hundred and fifty dollars for travel, five hundred for conferences. The fifty-five thousand is an expense to my budget that goes into our data processing fund. And as you can see, it's gone up from the thirty-one, four sixteen in the year that we're in.
I'll explain it, yeah, I'll talk about it later.
And I also have fifteen hundred dollars for the organizations I belong to, the MTA and the Kent County Treasurers Association. And any other miscellaneous expense that might come up.
Alright, on to Chris. I'm going to stop this, I'm going to put, he's got a presentation he's going to do. Thank you.
Alright, I've never done one of these before, so if I screw this up, it's, it's a rookie. So I guess to begin with, this is our, the department's mission statement, you know, we're here to protect, protect. Property and life and all rights guaranteed by the law. Our mission is to preserve the peace, maintain the order, control crime, apprehend offenders and enforce the law. And before I go any further, this presentation, I can't talk with this thing on. Is more to show you what we have as far as, what you guys have as a police department. As far as equipment, personnel, what we do and where the money goes. So the money you're spending on a police department, so. This is our major assets for the department. We've got four police cruisers, they're all Ford Explorer, gas, gas-operated cars. Computer equipment, the laptops are what's in the car. And we've got four, we've got ten desktops in the office. As far as communications go, we got twelve portable radios and six mobile radios. And there was a millage, I'm not sure exactly when it was, a few years ago, but the company dispatch, you pay a little extra in your millage. And purchased these radios. The new portable radio, you see it, the office is carrying now, looked very similar to what we had before. Um, but those are six thousand dollar per unit radios. Um, they're the eight hundred megahertz, supposed to act as, I go to UP and talk to somebody here on the street, on their, on their radio. They work much like a cell phone. We get six more mobile radios that haven't been installed yet, but those are going with police cars. All the full-timers have a cell phone, um, so that's, you see us carrying two phones, those are personal phones, a cell phone. Because if you use that cell phone for police work, then because it's a FOIA block, you know. So we don't have to carry a personal phone. And then for our part-time officers, we have one cell phone, I guess it should be six cell phone, but we have one cell phone. That is a pass around phone that part timers will use if they come to work. They take a privacy photo with it, they call somebody, they did an interview or something. That way, that phone is turned over to the attorneys, not their personal phone. Firearms, we have eight patrol rifles, we have four shotguns and twelve handguns. We have, the reason you see twelve handguns is because there's two handguns for each full-time officer. When we bought these handguns, we had six, six patrol officers, I'm sorry, five, a chief, four patrol officers, a detective. All the full-time officers get a duty handgun, which is a full-frame gun. And then we all, we issued all our officers a backup handgun that they carry undercover somewhere in these uniforms. So that's why you see twelve handguns here. We have body cameras, we have two tasers. Other vehicles we have is the two thousand ten Ford Fusion, which is a hybrid car, which is my staff car. Uh, we have a motorcycle and we have a twenty-four foot cargo trailer. The cargo trailer came from the ten thirty-three program. It's not some military trailer, it's a civilian trailer that we, we transport our range gear in. Barrels, targets, anything we would need to, you know, traveling show for our range. So that's the advantage of having, well, Scott Bassel does the ten thirty-three program. He's gotten us a lot of gear for basically the cost of shipping or, like this trailer was, it was just the cost of going to get it, which was down by Detroit, so. Uh, the next one, some capital investments we're gonna be making this year. We are purchasing a twenty twenty-two Ford Hybrid Police Cruiser. Uh, but that gets, uh, twenty-four miles per gallon city. If you look at, uh, what, if you go down to our cars and the driver now turns it, turn them on, you see that we're getting about twelve miles a gallon. What the gas is operated for. So hopefully that, we'll start seeing a savings in fuel with one of the cars. And this is gonna replace car eight three six, which is on the previous slide, which has, it's a two thousand fourteen, ninety-two thousand miles on it. This should have been retired at least twelve thousand miles ago. Okay, but because of budgets, everything, we had to, we had to let it off. Uh, still a good car, but it's not a good police car. Uh, the cost of that new cruiser is gonna be fifty-three thousand dollars. That seems like a lot of money, but. Purchase the car, we're getting it at a, if we get a good guy discount, because we're, it's a police car. And, um, the additional money, uh, I can't remember how much that cost is, but we are getting it outfitted by a professional. With all the lights, all the hookups with radios and all the equipment in there. So that, um, it needs to be fixed, the upgrade will have the blueprint on how to fix it, without having to cut wires and dig around, figure out who did what. Uh, both the cruiser and the outfit come with a five-year unlimited warranty. So, uh, if something breaks, we pay a, uh, I'm, I'm not sure of the deductibles, if there is one, but it'll be a lot cheaper than paying for, um, the full repair. Uh, which we ran into, we ran into last year when one of our cruisers spent forty-five hundred dollars on repairs on, for the brand auto warranty. Uh, we are getting four new laptops for cruisers. The ones we have now are hand-me-downs from Rock PD, they're the, uh, Panseit Toughbook. They came with Windows seven. We upgraded it to Windows ten. They, uh, reached the limit of their life because now things are feeding to not work out. Their touchscreen or a touchpad, some cars both will work, some cars just the screen works, the pad doesn't work, or vice versa. So they're just, we're, they're no good, they're, they're, they're not reliable anymore. The cost of those computers with the docking stations, which is the, actually the power supply, is gonna be thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars. And we're getting them, them through the county sheriff, the county sheriff's department, because that's what they're getting. So that any upgrades or service things, we can take them right to the sheriff's department to get it done and not have to contract out to somebody else. Uh, will be a little cost save there. One thing I don't have on here, we are gonna be replacing the DB car, which are, which is the old Pala downstairs. Um, this car is getting it through Right Way Auto. And Right Way Auto is a place that Gordy Lauren does salvage inspections for. He, uh, goes there one week, four hours, four hours during that week. Might be three to five cars, they pay him a hundred dollars to do the cars. That money goes into a salvage fund. Uh, we've managed to save up a lot of money where we can purchase a DB car through Right Way. It's, it's gonna be a used car. Uh, it's a Opedia, which will be, uh, big enough for all people around for training, uh, six, it's a seat six. Um, how we're purchasing it, purchasing it is we're trading them, we're giving them in trade. You have Pala and the, uh, little Chevy pickup we have. We're gonna give six thousand dollars for the trade. Right Way Auto's gonna donate six thousand dollars towards the deal. And then we're gonna pay ten thousand dollars out of our salvage money and get a twenty-two thousand dollar DB car. So. Um, like I said, it's a six-passenger, uh, uh, car, so we can transport people, take multiple people going through a certain training. We put them in that car and send, they'll have this on a cruiser to, to the training. Big enough to transport bulky items, if we get crime scene stuff, we gotta take to the lab or bring back to the department, we can use that vehicle. Uh, it'll be a staff car used mainly by the detectives, which is, which is working right now, but it'll stay here, we won't take it home, so. And then the breakdown of our hardware setup, our organizational chart, we have a chief, um, then we have an admin clerk. She, our new admin clerk starts Monday, Ivy DeBries, and she'll be training, training with Leslie, our part-time clerk. Under me is the sergeant, Princess Manselka. And the full-time, part-time, the detective all work for him. Um, he kinda directs, you know, if you need something done, I go to him, he goes to that. And then we have any trainees we might have will work under the full-time officer under, it's called the MTO, Field Training Officer. And we do have one trainee right now, her name is Jessica Kennedy. She was the gal that started with us, they got deployed from Washington. Now she's in my back, we're starting over. The breakdown of people we got, we got one chief, one full-time clerk, we got two part-time clerks, Kathy retired. But I told her she's not retiring all the way, we're gonna keep her as part-time, because eventually, I think we'll need to take time off. Then we need to have somebody to call on to help. Um, you have sergeant, you got three full-time officers.
No, it's actually four.
Yes. You have four full-time officers. Six part-time officers are gonna be losing one here pretty soon, um, Jezzler Hurts is leaving. And we have one trainee. This is our schedule. I don't know how, if you get, know how our schedule works, but our full-time officers work, um, we'll look at, uh. As you look at Shears, he works, uh. Two twelve-hour shifts on Monday, Tuesday, the first week, and then he works Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The Sunday shift is an eight-hour shift. Then the following week, he just works Wednesday, Thursday. We work a two-week pay cycle, that's eighty hours. And then the day shift does the same thing. Now, Detective Lauren, he's a part-time detective, part-time patrol officer. On the first week, those are eight-hour shifts, Monday, Tuesday. He's worked here eight before, those two days. And then he comes back, if you look up the bug, he's, he's now on a day shift, where he works two twelve-hour shifts as a patrol officer. And then those shifts flip-flop, the next week, when he comes in Monday and Tuesday, works as a patrol officer, then Wednesday, Thursday, as the detective. He does his salvage shifts during his detective time, because he's a, he's allowed, he's able to leave the city and not leaving us a lot, a lot of officer patrol streets. And then you got my shift, um, you have part-time officers that work on the weekends. Uh, Friday and Saturday, eight-hour shifts, and there's eight-hour shifts on Sunday and one on the first week, and two eight-hour shifts on the following Sunday. So that's where your part-time officers plug in. And they also plug in for time, when we have time off. Or if we're training or something like that, too, so it's good to have a part-time staff. All right, I'm gonna pray for the next one. Okay, this is kind of what I do, a real quick breakdown, I got this budget responsibilities. Um, I assist the admin clerk with blocking complaints. Payroll, oversee the part-time, the paid time off for the officers, so that they don't all take vacation on the same day, if you have no money. Vehicle maintenance, if anything, if it's broken, needs, needs to be worked on, it comes to my office and I call the Ford dealership and see how the time you get to get it fixed. I oversee official training certifications. Some certifications need to be renewed, like the tasers instructor, need to be renewed every couple of years. A department armor has to be renewed every couple of years. Um, make updates and training for any of our other instructors, I make sure they get to that, so that, uh, we're up to date on our stuff. I also liaison with city manager, department heads, and chamber commerce. And liaison with outside agencies, which is the police that do belong to the, uh, MACP. So I go out and try to get to their stuff. I have to, uh, go meetings with, uh, West Michigan, who will just as training consortium. Which we pay some of our training dollars to, and they, they bring in the stretch, like classes. And I also, um, attend the cat chiefs of police meetings, to kind of keep up to date on what's going on in the area. Sergeant Manselka, his, the sergeant's job is to plan and coordinate the training, uh, case manage it, police report review. The, it's his job to, and our reporting system, the officer puts the report in, supervisor looks at it, he can close it or keep it open. And it goes on to be followed by that officer, or it gets passed on to the detective. So Sergeant Manselka kinda keeps track of that, you know, somebody, if something isn't getting worked on, he makes sure it gets worked on. Um, he's also in charge of officer counseling and formal training. He's also our unofficial tech support guy, who has a whiz bang in computers. Uh, he's also, you can call him our recurrent officer, the guy's, the guy loves to shop, he loves to.
He does.
If we find out how much would this cost, he can find it, he'll find it cheaper than I can. Or he'll talk to the guy, he'll do a cheap price. He's a really good asset. Um, he's also our new firearms director, he's got back in school, and we will be sending him to a armor class to make sure that all of our, um, equipment is working correctly, as expected. Um, he assists Gordy with, yeah, uh, employee's schedule, um, as far as the part-time hours go. Uh, he does assist, uh, Gordy with follow-up on the detective stuff, because Gordy just can't keep up with it, there's just, there's just a lot of stuff. He doesn't have the time in this detective hours to do it. Um, and then he also, on top of all this, he's also responsible for routine control. He's also, you know, he's working, he's the also patrol officer. So, but, but he's, but he's got all these responsibilities, plus he's, we want him to be out there, you know, being seen and stopping cars and answering complaints. The police detective, which is Gordy Lauren, follows up on all major cases. Anything that is gonna take a lot of time to work on, Gordy will get it. If it's something that he has to do, or something that you need to go outside the city to talk to a, a suspect or witness, whatever. Gordy gets, because he will travel outside of town in detective days to take care of that. He's also in charge of part-time schedule. And he is kind of like the go-to person, if something needs, uh, he approves shifts for people on the, on those part-time hours, we showed you on the schedule. Uh, so he needs to check on that, uh, probably once a day, he's, he's working on that. He's also our liaison to other detectives, the prosecutor, the courts, and other agencies that assist us, um, as far as laws, law enforcement support. Such as the Child Assessment Center. They, they all have their own meetings, and he currently can't go to those because he doesn't have time. Or they may, they may happen on a patrol day, he can't leave the city. He has been able to attend some of these now because of the Zoom stuff, but if they quit doing that, he won't be able to attend some of those. He does process paperwork from our office to the courts and, uh, and the, um, prosecutor's office, and he's our salvage inspector. Now, he works an eighty-hour week, eighty-hour pay cycle every two weeks. Thirty-two hours of that pay cycle is, is four eight-hour shifts, making thirty-two, thirty-two hours as detective. Forty-eight hours of that two weeks, he's the patrol officer. Then you have our, our patrol officers, you have Mike Stevens, Officer Shears. They're both going to the MTO school here next month. Um, they, they, I just found out yesterday that they did get seats in that school. Officer Stevens will be going to Taser Instructor School here on May fourth. And then we need to either him or Officer Shears go to DT school, Detective Tech, because of tactics schools, to be our trainer for the department. Those are the two classes, the Taser and the DT, that they'll have to recertify every couple of three years. Um, on top of that, they enter pause for investigations, ticket ports, suspect equipment, monitor traffic, apprehend offenders. Public relations functions, there's our parades and festivals, they'll attend those. And there's online in-house training that we assign every officer of the department. Um, we pay for a service called Virtual Academy. I go through, it's a one-hour class. They take the class, take the tests, it's all done online, so I'll record it online. And they, the people from Virtual Academy will send MCOS, which is Michigan Commission on Law and Force Standards. Send them a notice that so-and-so passed this class, gets added to their official training record at the state. So if they ever move on from here, they can pull that out and say, oh, you've had this training, that training. Um, and as patrol officer, they need, they need to maintain their certifications, so. Which is part of the training that they have to go through. So our complaint line for twenty twenty. Uh, this is January to January, we entered two thousand and forty-nine complaints. It could be anything from a broke-down motorist to a B and E, everything in between, okay? So anytime we get called to something, we tell the officer, take number, document what happened. So we got a, we got a record of it. Out of those two thousand complaints, we arrested ninety-one people. Uh, as far as traffic goes, we had nine hundred and twenty-one traffic stops last year. Two hundred and fifty-five of those people got tickets. We had eighty-four crashes, eight with nine injuries. So. So our budget. Twenty twenty-one, our, our total budget was eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, fifteen cents. Now, the five full-time officers, the top three of the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars is what I calculated off of what we're making right now. This does not include the fringe benefits, this is just your base salary. Um, you have a full-time clerk you pay forty-nine thousand dollars for, and you can spend eighty-three thousand, nine hundred hours on the part-time hours. Which we keep track of every, every pay cycle. We used up four thousand, five hundred and thirteen part-time hours at eighteen dollars and sixty cents an hour. So I'm, I'm not gonna go through, I don't, maybe I'm gonna look at my whole budget, I'm not sure what I'm doing yet, so. That's what, that's the bulk of our, it's like Mike said, the bulk of our expenses is personnel costs, okay? We are asking for an increase in our, our budget to one million dollars, through one million, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Because we would like to hire a sixth officer to take over as a patrol officer, to free up Gordy, our detective, just to do detective work. And I'll explain why this is important. Uh, we're gonna keep the full-time clerk at the same rate, and we're gonna, I'd like to push it for five thousand part-time hours. With an increase of twenty dollars an hour for the part-timers, for additional hundred thousand dollars in salary for them. Um, and if you, I haven't done the comparables, but Mike has. We are very low as far as how many there are part-time officers. And this would bring us closer where we should be for a part-time police officer. These guys go through the same training, they do all the same stuff, I do, or they, or Mike, or, or the full-timer does, except they're only here ten hours, twenty hours, it'll be wherever it might be.
We approved that, right?
Say again?
We approved those, right?
We did, yes, yeah, yeah.
So, that's why the budget, that's, that's where the budget increase comes from. It's also the cost of the new police car that ended down there. Well, the computers came out of the salvage.
Computers came out of the salvage, salvage, the, the cost of the police car, forty-three thousand dollars of that's coming out this year. About forty thousand dollars roughly. We budgeted the sixth full-time officer to begin in January. Um, the remaining increase was personnel, was your normal personnel costs and pension costs, as I, you know. The officers are getting a two percent increase to their contract this year. Healthcare costs went up six point three percent, pension costs for everyone are scat-, are going way up. Um, so that's, 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 oh, and then the other big one is we had to double the, double the line item cost for ammunition. We can't get ammunition right now, it's, it's. And the price has gone way up. Not that we, well, they use it for training, but it's not like we wanna go out and do it on patrol, but it, it, it's, it's, it's a, it's a needed expense.
And we are trying to work around, we did purchase training guns, which are twenty-two, twenty-two long rifle pistols. That are the, uh, lock, just like we carry. So it's the same field function as twenty-two, twenty-two long rifle. We do have twenty-two long rifle drop-in mechanisms for our rifles that we can use. We got, we bought those when Obama was president, when the big scare came up that they were gonna steal everybody's guns. So, um, so we have that option, but then we gotta find the twenty-two ammo, so. Um, that's where our problem with it. Um, the next slide, the, the sixth full-time officer, just like I was explaining before, our current detective position is like part-time. Works eighty hours, eighty-hour pay cycle, forty-eight hours for patrol, thirty-two hours as detective. He's also responsible for the salvage inspection, which is about eight hours per pay cycle, or four hours a week. Um, I'm generating, I, I had this, these, I had Gordy go through all his, all his daily logs. Okay, tell me how much actual time you're actually doing the stuff you're doing, so like, you know, because he does use, um, uh. He does use quite a bit of his patrol time for detective work, so keep up.
Can I ask a really stupid question?
Yes, sir.
Salvage inspection means?
He goes to Right Way Auto, they get cars that are, are wrecked, and they fix them. So a salvage inspection is, you have a VIN number for the car, but if you're replacing major parts in your car.
So it's sold as salvage?
Say again?
So they, so when they resell it, they sell it as a, with a salvage title on it?
Yes, they have like five or six. Yes, they have like five or six VIN numbers on it because your fender came from this car, the rotor came from that car, like that, two hundred cars.
Right, okay, thank you.
So if you look at what he actually does, he told me that he used 70% of the patrol shift for salvages. Seventeen percent of the patrol shift, each other's salvage, and 20% of the patrol shift detective duty. So out of all that, out of the 48 hours he's supposed to be doing patrol, 29, he averaged about 29 and a half hours of actual patrol time for the two-week cycle. So these other dudes are eating up, eating up his, his patrol time, which means he's not out here patrolling, he's doing other things. This is not included for his eligible vacation. And the sixth officer will help free up the detective and will resolve and force more people on the street. And right now it'll make us more of an effective proactive division when the department with the officers are available. Right now, because of our, we're kind of stretched right now, we are more reactive than proactive as a department. So creating a new patrol position, like I said, frees up, next slide, right? Will free up our detective to do investigations more quickly, allows a detective time to, to, for a thorough investigation, freeing up the officers to do more. Freeing up other officers from helping them do this follow-up, please try to help keep up. Allows them more time for detectives to attend the area detective meetings where reported intelligence is shared, keeping local people informed of crime in the area. When he goes in these detective meetings, he hears things from Kent County or I am counting, hey, this is going on, we're seeing this, are you seeing that, no, we're not. Well, now we got a heads up that it might happen here. And allows a detective more time to be a liaison with prosecutor and courts, keep us up to date on alleged procedures because things are changing, stuff changed for the tickets that we found out at the last minute. We have to put people's phone numbers, email addresses on tickets now, which. There's other things that, little things that change, we find out at the last minute because we don't know, we should have known, so. So why we need a dedicated detective, these are from, I went through all the reports from last year, from January 2020 to April 21. We had one armed robbery in town, I don't know if you guys are aware of that, happened right down the street here. A gun was fired at the victim, nobody was hit, you don't know where the bullet went. We did have a strong-armed robbery, which happened down at our phone store. And we were very lucky to, the citizen there took pictures and it really helped wrap up that case quick. We had to do a search warrant that evening and found all the stuff, plus more stuff. We had seven CSCs, which are criminal social conduct complaints, felonious assault, and that is assault with a serious injury or as a result of a weapon being used. We had 22 domestic assaults, 18 assaults, 13 B and Es which put in the schools that we just had. 18 fraud cases, thousands of dollars were stolen. 13 retail frauds, stealing from the stores, hundreds of dollars were stolen. The fraud cases can be very complex. It involves one, two, three search warrants where you're searching their bank accounts, you're searching emails, searching phones to, because a lot of it's not electronic, and that takes a lot of time. So, and this is where Gordy and Scott kind of work together because they have to, because this is not a time for Gordy to do it himself. And so it takes a lot of time. And then if these other things we had required Gordy to travel out of town, talk to people or talk to other departments, gather information. Doing investigation, doing it right, takes a lot of time. So when you get to the prosecutor's office, you present the complete case and they don't turn you away. Final thoughts? We are a dedicated group of officers wishing to serve the residents and city the best we can of what we have. The report to 2021 with some urgently needed upgrades for our fleet, which is the new car coming and our technology, the laptops. And I seriously urge the council and city management to give a source consideration to adding a sixth officer to our department. This will give the city and residents improved patrol coverage and allow our detective the time to do their timely, complete, thorough investigations. I can't stress that enough. When I started here, we had seven hour officers, we had six full-time and a permanent part-time. There was two officers on every day except Sunday. Things happened, my just got cut, went to six, five, now we're asked to go back to six. I worked nights for the last 20 years. It was, it was, and part of those, part of that time I made that permanent part-time officer, I always had a partner. And then I didn't have a partner. And working by yourself at night can be nerve-wracking. So you had to be careful, a little small. We had two officers that are, we have an immediate backup right there, maybe that's not involved, but we do need, we do need a full-time detective to keep, to keep up with the stuff that's been going on. Any questions I can ask?
Chris, I have one, you mentioned the second vehicle that could possibly sit up to six, right?
Yes.
My recommendation is we are an extremely small police force. I would rather having Paul Cliff or Marty, if you need $30 worth of additional gas, to split up that. I would hate to see six or four officers in a particular car and God help us, nothing happens to them, but if something did hit that vehicle, I'd rather have it split up and take less risk of.
Completed fours in case that.
Exactly, and they can't control that. But if, but if there's a gas issue then, I, I'd rather see them take two vehicles, to be honest with you. Drive a crammed stick to the vehicle and something severely happened to them.
It would cripple your force.
At the most, the extended train is probably three.
But even that, that's a third of your force, you know, and that's, that's a lot.
The new vehicle too, they can carry more gear, it's more of a, more usable, right?
Yeah, like when we go through all the, all the weapons in the back of the car.
And it's probably going to be big enough to haul that trailer too.
It's a, it's a KED, so I don't, I don't know if it's a trailer, it's packed, uh, it would, we can't even pull that 24-foot trailer with our cruisers. You have to rent a truck.
Yeah, a duly.
I got a big truck.
Yeah.
You charge as less as he does.
Other than that, just for your, for your first effort, you did a great job, so a lot, you're good informant, information, so thank you.
Good for the citizens.
Yes, as well.
And I do want to see the department get back up to full strength and we can get more presence out on the street and more people in the city because the residents, I know for a fact, absolutely would have a conviction if our police department ever went away. So we need to strive and find the time and the money, the resources to get us built back up to where we are, you know.
I get, I get calls from people in North Hudson, on Riverside, downtown, Bowles Road. They all want a police officer, can't you put a police officer? Yeah, 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 well, you know, we've got one guy, we got a chief. And for the downtown area, we have complaints, we are working on that. Unfortunately, for no reason, these speed signs didn't record anything for, I don't know how long. So we have, let's go through how many tickets we've written in the downtown area over the last six months and how many accidents we've had. And the signs are now recording, we're going to look at those next week. We're going to try to put an officer, I might be able to do my own kind of play car, just radar gun, do my own speed study. And see, I mean, down here, where you're inside of those two signs, where you're a couple blocks from the sign, because they, we know they slow down there, who knows what happens between them? So. Give us an idea of when we should put an officer out there, that during peak time, when the most number of vehicles are out there, where we have the speeders. So, and I know our guy was on a, this morning, I pulled in, I heard he stopped two cars while I was here, so. I have put the word out there, we're going to be nice, we need to buckle down on the speeders, so. And it is getting nice and more things are opening up and more people in town. I know Fridays, I've noticed, that's when the crazies are all, they don't pay attention to nothing on Fridays.
I don't know if you have any questions more about their budget, I mean, the increases to their budget or, as I just said, it's the police car, it's the extra officer, it's the increased personnel costs and that, that go up every year and ammunition. That's really what it, what it boils down to.
Yeah, because the officer we have patrolling the social district, that's being paid for by DDA.
Correct, that is correct.
And we're going to continue to do that.
Yep, it's in the budget, yep. We've pulled the officer back a couple of days, so for, before we were doing Thursday through Sunday. In the summer months, we'll bring the officer back on Thursdays for the concerts. But we pulled Sundays because the, the traffic down here is so small on Sundays, it's. Trying to, trying to use it when there's going to be more people down here. So, but yeah, it is budgeted via.
I have a related question. It was enlightening for me to find out that writing tickets, there's no financial. Is there any way to change that?
I mean, you could write, well, that's the issue, is you could write things under local ordinance and you would get a more, a larger cut, but the problem, the problem lies is that the, if the local ordinance, if they decide to contest the local ordinance, meaning it goes to a hearing, where it goes beyond an informal hearing, especially this happens more with misdemeanors than it would, than it really would with traffic. But you then have to get, the county prosecutor doesn't take those kicks. If you, if you enforce them under local ordinance, the county prosecutor doesn't take them, your local prosecutor does. And for the amount of misdemeanor cases we get and code enforcement cases we get, it's, it's not cost-effective for us to do that. It, it's cheaper, it's cheaper, honestly, it's cheaper for us to have the count to enforce the, the misdemeanors under state so the county can afford, so the county can handle the prosecution of those matters, rather than having Dickinson write to it. Or, or any other, I mean, there's other people you could do for local enforcement, I have an individual who bugs me all the time about it and it's just, it's. There's just no, there's really no, we're not ma, we're not making money off it. So it, it doesn't make sense for, for me to, to change that.
If you get, if you get a subject, you get stopped for speeding, they fight the ticket on it and they want to go right through a formal hearing, instead of a prosecutor being there to help the officer prosecute the case, which we're paying for. Now we're paying our attorney how many dollars an hour to sit in court and fight it, so. And then the ticket might be a hundred bucks and you spend $500 to fight it.
Okay, $100 ticket.
Your officers sometimes attend that.
Right, yeah, the, you know, for an informal hearing, the officer's going to be the one who's going to go in front of the magistrate, make the argument. But I've seen, I've had it happen where they've gone beyond a formal, informal hearing, they want a formal hearing, they want to go, they want to, they want to, they want a district court trial. I've, I've had to, I've had to go to a district court trial for speeding tickets, so, which is kind of ridiculous, but I've done it.
So do we get a, a small percentage, anything? I mean, I know, I haven't had a ticket in a long time, but from what I hear from people who get them, they're kind of expensive these days.
We don't really, a lot of them go to libraries, a lot of the tickets go to libraries.
Sandy Graham here?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of those proceeds, I think jail bonds and, and, and traffic tickets go to libraries.
And there's a reason that they do that, it's because they don't want house money off.
Right.
And then we just be writing tickets out here.
Yeah, in some states that, you know, the, the money does go to the jurisdiction and there's some communities in Ohio that if you go 26, you're getting a full-boat ticket and people go nuts.
Really nice police cars there.
But I know, I know that happens, a lot of the small towns in Ohio, that's very common. And because they do get the, the money, we don't.
I get it.
But it still doesn't mean we still shouldn't enforce.
I agree, totally agree, totally agree. No, I totally agree. All right, any, any more questions out of the police department? Well, it's 11:20, if we want to keep working, we can, or if you want to take a break, it's up to you. The next one up is public works.
I'm going to use the rest of the.
All right.
I make a motion that we allow Marty. Ninety seconds?
Yep, everything's on camera, Cliff.
Yes.
And it's recording.
Can you make sure you say that out, it was Cliff?
It was Cliff. That's fine. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Of course, then we're going to have a broken problem and then we'll.
Ah, it'll be two days.
Mayor Pro Town. Is that on camera?
It is, but yeah, it's all right. We just got to remember on Monday.
Does Audrey have a snack?
He got left out of the, so.
Yep.
All right, so the cemetery.
Two seventy-six. Yep.
Okay, again, you have a full-time text and starting Monday. His name is Darren, the doctor, he's a local person, lives just north of town. And things are working pretty well for us. If you look through the numbers for a cemetery, they basically stay pretty close to the same. One of the big things for us is trying to keep the facility outfit, building out there in good shape. If you recall, this past year, we did some exterior work on it. This, this coming year, we want to take care of the flooring on the inside of the government in the office, it's, it's kind of nasty. So they've been cleaning, they've been working on that, we've got a place to go, interior doors and flooring. Want to create the mappings that are up on the walls with our new person coming in. We want to try to make some things, changes out there to make the area, the building out there more user-friendly for the public as they come in. So that won't always just come to City Hall with the information, try to update that out there. And also we want to upgrade the, the signs that are in the cemetery. Right now you go through there, look at each section side and they're kind of hard to find sometimes, you know, they don't stand out very well. That's our, our big numbers in the cemetery.
Was there a thing we talked about maybe increasing some cost out there, did we consider that?
Yes, I think we'll talk about that when we get to the fees, right?
We, what are we talking about now?
Okay.
We looked at the, the fees that are charged at the cemetery, trying to keep up with what's going on out there. If you recall, council earlier, I can't remember what it was.
This one.
The cemetery, new rules out there, some look at what we charge out there, just trying to increase some of our fees out there to cover some of our costs. For some things, property and such, but we raised most everything at $25 to $50 for the lots and the residential, we're at $250, $275, non-resident, $500, $550. We have the cost for burials, openings, enclosures, about $100 to cover our cost better. And then also increased, added a, after 3:00 PM bill, we're finding a lot of funerals are happening at 2:30 to 3:30 time period. Then fall over after overtime and we want to just make sure they understand that going into it, so that when Funeral Home schedules these things, they know in advance as well. So we added an extra hundred dollars for going over at 3:00 PM, to be built in the funeral homes, which are the ones that are scheduled. And then again, we up our weekend costs as well. We're looking at trying to upgrade our, our numbers to keep an average of what we have in the area around here, plus to cover our costs. Next item would be public works.
Four forty-one.
Four forty-one?
Yes.
Again, salaries, what covers us doing our work down there. Then we have some office issues, supplies that are necessary. Big thing, professional contractual repair maintenance, street lighting, LEDs change, that's the LED changeover that Light Power is doing. They started it last year, hopefully we'll get it finished this year, it isn't already done. And then we have some asphalt repairs for down at the DPW. And then we have some asphalt repairs for down at the D P W. And then as you go through the operating, if you go, I bring this up because you have repair maintenance, the street lighting under the professional contractual and you have street lighting under the operating, that's why I point out that's the electricity. And then you come down to the building improvements, uh, that dollar amount in there is for a cold storage building with the loss of our building down at, uh, the old D P W coming up. Looking at ways to, uh, move that operation we have down there, which is all our signs, it's kind of like a fixing shop where everything we have to work on down there. And trying to put that inside somewhere. Still searching for a great location to do that, so that's those. Questions on public works. On the parks, seven fifty-one. Back up to seven, for several quick chamber river walk, you'll see certain dollar amounts that were given for, uh, under the contractual professional utilities, that also includes those bathroom costs that we have that we don't know what the area, because you have built the bathroom yet. But it gets built the next year, I'll make sure we got dollars covered in there. The seven fifty-one of parks, uh, contractual is the mowing, fertilizing. And also we need to, uh, get help on starting our, uh, park master plan, if you call it. It expires in twenty-one, so we need to by the end of twenty twenty-one to have that. No, expired twenty-two, we want to start the work in twenty-one so that by the end of twenty-two, it's completed and, uh, January first is ready to build and approved by the, by the state. So that's what's in there for that. And then repair and maintenance, we're looking at trying to correct the park, the parking lots and yeah, that'd be correct, so the parking lots and the professional maintenance. And then there's some miscellaneous work at the parks that we need to, uh, one of the ball fields needs that fence covered in the outfield, we're working on that. And then just upgrade our, uh, our, our foot mount as needed. Then we get into the, uh, building improvements, that's, uh, sixteen thousand dollars of that is to put a new roof on the foreman building up to the point where the area was fixed a few years ago. So the action from, my understanding is the area that was fixed at the very top and then the side parts that, that need to be, uh, replaced because it's leaking inside the building now, we want to make sure that's, that's covered and, uh, that building expand, can be, uh, be used for a long time, because we do use it for our cold storage at the moment. And then, uh, in the winter time, we have a nice area inside there for salt and sand for winter operations. And, and we look for a place to move our, our operations to the old D P W, considering the spot inside that, build them there to put up some walls to, uh, move inside from that down there, that way we're all closer to actually the D P W building. Then we also, the, uh, park, the park commission would like to see, uh, park signage. So we wanted to start that program we're putting together, getting some outside help to, as far as what we want to do for signage in the parks. So that it's consistent and has all the information on there. And that's going to be part of, I, I'm expecting it to be part of the information package that they come out with as they work on the upgrading and the park information for the, uh, for the city website. That's, uh, all the information for that. Any questions on parks? What are the items, uh, seven fifty-seven is, uh, showboat. And again, not knowing what we're going to have to do with the showboat, I put together just a simple, uh, operating cost, I guess it's estimated because at this time, I'm not really sure what all that's going to be. But one may have something in there to cover expenses, this is where the showboat comes online, start using it and have, to have some bills made. Uh, under the library, seven ninety, again, we do work over there, it gets covered in there. Uh, big things over there for, uh, building improvements, seven, uh, nine oh nine seventy-five. The auto door openers need to be replaced on that, uh, on that building. You got any issues with them, have some complaints with them. And then also, uh, heating and cooling repairs, that system over there seems to have a lot of, uh, little issues that need to be addressed a lot, so we're working through those.
Are you talking about the handicap operators and all the doors, how many are on there?
There's two right now.
That kind of thousands is pretty close.
Under the museum, uh, bingo four, building improvements, we're looking at, uh, pointing on the exterior of the building as needed, that's something that's come up and we want to give that, take some care of. And then again, if we can find a, a place to get some, uh, funding for the steps off, right, we can spend some dollars in there for, uh, match money for that, but we're still, uh, searching out dollars for that, that's repairs of those concrete steps is going to be a major undertaking.
Wouldn't the, uh, historical district, or wouldn't they, uh, be willing to help? I mean.
Right, and I know we never have, so I think that would be a prudent thing to reach out and we said, this is what total cost is and fifty percent.
Sure.
Right? It's easy to find the, the little bit left. Also, we're discussing that with, uh, with the city hall. So that's the, uh, general fund items, move on to, uh, major streets. We're working, big, big, our major local street operations are pretty consistent year after year. Uh, it all depends on what we get for weather and, and weather effects, what, uh, what happens with roads and such. You know, because they have a hard winter, their, our funding for expenses for winter maintenance goes up. A lot of times when you have a hard winter, your spring, uh, dollar costs go up because you have a lot of potholes you have to fix. So we try to budget an average year, because that's dollars that are put in there for that part of it. But when we start to look at the big ticket items for major streets coming here, um, we want to go through and make sure our, under professional services, we get all our street pacer rated so we can work on finalizing our ass street asset management plan. And then into the capital outlay, as we're all are aware, Monroe Street's coming up, so we're going through the design now. It'll continue into, uh, the next fiscal year and, uh, the construction should start in spring. Right now, we're estimating about almost thirty point eight million dollars for Monroe Street.
When we do.
That's from U S D A dollars.
Yeah, and, and when those projects come, what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to create a designated fund with that financing, so it's segregated from our normal water sewer costs, from our normal water sewer projects. Because it, it, it just from, from, I know for me looking at it from a budget standpoint, when I get these influences of cash and it really, it really screws us up. So it's like, why don't we just, when, when we get those financed dollars, we're going to just set all that in a separate account and we're going to, we're going to manage the projects through those separate accounts.
Dan, Dan, how often should you get that pacer rating for roads? I remember Rich doing that not too many years ago and now we're back doing it.
You should do them every two years, to be honest. That's what they recommend, is every two years, all your streets, most communities will do major streets every year. You can utilize those, uh, that information to get some tip money from the state and the fed. Local streets, most communities do it every two to three years, depending on the way. Once, once you get that, that program put together, once you have all your streets rated, as long as you're consistently doing it the same time of the year with the same people, because it's, it's a function of, of, it's subjective to the person looking at it. I, I can look at it, it's, ooh, that's a terrible looking street, other people come on and say, oh, it's not that, that, because this over here is the worst.
Yeah.
So they've got a, a ten point system to go by, but again, it's a, it kind of, it's a little subjective depending on who's in there. And by, my experience in other places where you have groups that'll get together and help you do this through the county end of it is, is it seems like everybody in that group has, uh, has a ulterior motive for where they want that street to be, because they all come from different.
Yeah, my mother-in-law lives on it right now.
Like, and I could tell you, uh, where Streetscape and Fed was that way, where they all of a sudden upgraded what our pacer rating was. It's like, oh.
Yeah, I remember that.
And then they also did that to us over there on, uh, on Poplar Street.
Right.
It was ready to be done and the group came through and, and prior to that, we, instead of going out there all winter long and patching potholes, we just do a skin coat down. Oh, look, streets repaved and rager, pager rating went up, now we lost our funding.
Well, remember, yeah, remember what happened.
So we want to keep consistent on it and that way when we go to work with the county and, and the, and the metro group on funding, if we're consistent, we can show that consistency, it's sure a slide easier to convince them, because money's important.
And, and, and we've never act, the crazy thing is the county, you know, we're part of the, we're part of the Grand Valley Metro Council, that's our regional planning entity that handles road funding. The city has only gone, the city has never gone through the transportation, it's called the T I P. The city's actually never gotten projects awarded out of the T I P. We've always gotten project, projects awarded out of the small urban program, which is a, which is a set aside of money that we can get, just communities like us. Um, but we're, we were having, we've been having the conversation and it's eventually, probably about eight, I'm going to say about eight years away, but G drive's going to need a major, uh, resurfacing probably in about eight years. And, um, it's going to be about, you know, in today's dollars, it's a million dollar project to do all of G drive. So my intent is, is when that, you know, once we get closer to that point where we can start submitting that project, we're going to go for the, we're going to go, we're going to be competing with the county, you know, throughout all the other communities in the county for that million dollar project, because it's, it's, you know, if we can get eighty percent of it funded, and we never asked for, I mean, we never asked for anything, I got to think that they would be, you know, willing to, you know, because we only have a couple of major streets that are actually eligible for that funding and that one definitely is. I, I tend to think we would do okay and actually get the funding.
Because I would sure hate to see a better rating for Jackson Street now than it was two years ago.
Right. You, no, you won't, Jackson's a two right now, I just, matter of fact, I just went through all the, I just went through the payers the other day, I'm putting a six-year road plan together and I, I just looked at Jackson, it's a two. One's the worst, but it's, it's not a, it's not a one just yet.
I got that's subjective between one and two.
Exactly.
Washington's a one.
Washington is a one.
I think that's negative.
That's a negative.
One two years.
Turn it back and round it.
But it keeps the speeders down.
There's a lot to be said on that part, but.
That's our, we can, all we have to do is put a title on, speed decreasing zone. That's why it's the way it is, where it's an experimental program.
But don't give people a challenge, because someone will try to take it on. See how fast one can go. Okay, uh, local streets again, the, the operations, the, any operations, we try to, uh, budget for an average year. Usually you'll see those numbers don't change too, too greatly and again, it depends on the weather and winter and, and the, uh, how things hold up. Big tickets in this area here, our professional services, you know, we'll look at that pacer, uh, pacer ratings done with our streets. We also want to, uh, make sure our, uh, any projects come up, we have those engineered out and, uh, got those covered.
You're in local, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The, uh, two oh three.
Yep.
Um, big, big tickets, as Mike has talked earlier, Amity Street's coming up in this, uh, this budget year. Uh, again, there's money that's being shared in there between C B B G and the D B A. It's about a five hundred thousand dollar project of which, uh, D B A was nice enough to put in a hundred forty-three thousand and the C B B G grant is another two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand, so at least one hundred twenty-five for the city to, uh, come up with through the Amity Street. And basically, Amity Street's going to be done to the same as Suffolk, Howard and Elizabeth where the previous years go through, take out the badass, take all the asphalt out and then fix any bag gravel that's in there, then take it down to eight inches and then putting it all back together, repairing any curb gutter effects that need a repair, and, and that's about it. So we're going to take care of that. Something I do want to say on that, and then, well, before I get to that, we also have, uh, Jane Ellen coming up with this, uh, this coming year. It's all, we have the bids already taken, uh, that project will start probably, uh, uh, early July. C L Trucking, same company that's doing, uh, Foreman Street and is going to be doing Jane Ellen and.
All Nash. They're doing all Nash.
Doing Alden Nash and they're also, uh, we had a pre-bid meeting for Amity, uh, this past week and they were one of the three contractors that were done the pre-bid meeting. So those bids could open next, uh, for Amity, or it could open on the fourth and then, uh, the next council meeting after that will bring them to college.
And the sewer waters that can get in those areas?
To our knowledge, yes. One of the things that you brought that up, one of the things that, uh, if you recall, we talked about in the underwater before is these lead water services. Now we have to do, uh, investigations and find out what's there. We had a, a, a meeting with, a webinar meeting with the D Q, they fine tune the information that we have to do. And now we're thinking, you know, you go out there and you check the, the shut-off and, and people's front yard, you can see what's on either side of it. And you can make a determination from there if you have galvanized or copper or if you have to consider the potential of the lead pigtail or anything like that. Or, like, well, the state's come out with, with their rules and their, uh, guidance on this and saying, we also have to dig up the street, uh, connection and see what that is, if, if there's any question that there is something under the copper in the ground there. So what we want to do, and, and to make it even more, more fun for work with the state is, is we can't pick the houses in the streets and that. They have a, uh, Excel program where you put all the information of all your unknowns, uh, water services in and then this program will tell you randomly which ones to check, so you get to your twenty percent, uh, looked at and then go from there to determine what needs to be changed out. Couple things with that also, any, unless you have records, definitive records that say what something is in the ground when it was built, we have to look at it as an unknown. Uh, even if like, uh, Val de Vista area, we're pretty, we're almost hundred percent certain there's no galvanized pipe that was put in there when that was built. However, that was built prior to nineteen eighty-nine. And you think prior to nineteen eighty-nine, it's got to be considered unknown and you have to investigate. Unless you have definitive records or definitive ordinance that you can go back and show what was, should have been put in the ground out there. So because of that, when we do a, a road like Jane Ellen, we're going to try and really quick down and get that program put in and see which ones specifically we would have to do, but if we don't get that done, we're still going to go out when the asphalt's taken off the streets and with Amity and check a few of the water services just for our, our, uh, random check of what's out there. Just help with our determination so that we get that done before we put the asphalt back down and not have to go put little holes in the asphalt to check that at a later date. I only wish they would have told us this a year ago before we did Suffolk, Howard and Elizabeth and we could have done all those houses at the same time, so.
And you would think with the next technology, that some metal or something, you could rate it out and find out exactly, is it PVC, is it lead, is it copper? By how that moves back on your.
The big thing with, the big thing with the connection at the water main is to make sure there isn't that lead pigtail. And, and the thing that gets frustrating on this, years ago, yes, we want to get the lead pipe out and then galvanized. So communities as they came across those things, took them out. Well, the state says, well, don't worry about pigtail, that's my, that's minimal amount, uh, and it's only like a foot long. So it's very minimal amount of that lead that could be there, so. So communities went through, replaced what they did. Now, unless you kept a record saying you took that out, and you have to go back and check and see if you did or not. And, and that's where it's some, getting some frustrations out of people. And then at the same time, there's, uh, uh, no, your finish or your core that taps the beat, your shut-off at the, at the property line and, and things of that nature are made out of brass. Well, brass prior to twenty, one, two thousand something had lead in it, well, that's part of making brass. Well, now it's, everything has to be lead free, but we're not concerned with those as much as we are with the lead pigtail. So it just kind of, for me, it heightens the frustration level that we had this before and, and they said, don't, you don't worry about this. Now they're saying, well, we got to get this little piece out, don't worry about that smaller piece, what's going to happen ten years from now? It's just that frustration level. But we're going to do our, our due diligence and we're going to, every chance we can get to change out the line. And just to, just to follow up on that, so I talked about through water, um, the state says, when we figure out how many, we have to twenty twenty-five to do this study of all these, uh, uh, surfaces, to find out where our potential lead is. We got to do in the four-point investigation on the random number that we have to do. We have to twenty-five to finish that, get that to the state. But starting right now in twenty twenty-one, we have twenty years to get the lead up, which we want to do, but we have to make sure we have a plan to it, but we now required to do five percent of our system every year. every year to get that, to get through all of them to get done in the state. And this webinar came out and told us, we better get started because we're gonna wanna, they're gonna make a request to every community. If they're not keeping up with that five percent, why? And what are you gonna do to get it on track?
You said you had twenty-year plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, you get that one hundred percent of them?
Yep. So one of the, one of the positives out of this that I've taken from it is when we do Monroe Street, we're replacing all those water services. Well, that's to add into our twenty. Next year's Washington's gonna be the same way and that lead and water. I'm anticipating we're gonna find some lead pigtails in those areas and we'll just get them all up and just be able to, uh, do that with our heads up. We'll have to continue doing it for twenty years.
Yeah. What do you do for documentation? Follow up pictures, just put on the record?
Yeah, all of that. Put it on a computer program.
Trust me, we have documentation now with Ralph on everything.
Might buy some more computer space.
We may.
But that, we laughed about, but he does a very thorough job. So when it's done, all said and done, we'll, we'll, we'll know we've done it great properly.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's our, uh, our, our local street end of it, uh. We're open, oh, one last thing is, uh, uh, end of second half of, uh, twenty twenty-one, we'll be starting our design work for Washington Street too, so that, uh, or twenty twenty-two, I mean, so that twenty-three we can. That's, uh, next couple of years is gonna be really big for projects here in County Street. Moving on from there to.
Sewer, right? No, I got DDA.
Okay. We'll go to wastewater. Want me to touch on the wastewater plant or you want me to?
I'll take the wastewater plant.
Do you want to do it right now?
Yeah, um, the, the wastewater plant, um, just the two, the two big things to, to, um, pay attention to, um, pull up treatment real quick. Um, the, we have two capital projects. We're currently working on, we, they've already put the lid to digester number three. Um, that was, that was the capital project that was done this year, but we haven't been billed for it yet. We're gonna get billed the first part here probably in June. It was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of work. So the first, the first part of it, we're gonna get the bill here in June. Um, and then the second part will be in July, so it'll go into next fiscal year. So we spread it out over two fiscal years. So that's the first, that's, that's part of the cap. Like, if you see the seventy-five thousand dollars right here, that's sixty thousand dollars of it is for the second payment. And then we also got about fifteen thousand dollars worth of, uh, um, some steel and concrete work that needs to be done. Some of the foundations around the digester, um, they really need to be redone. And that's, they anticipate about a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, repair to that. Um, our treatment costs, um, I, the only other thing is the contractual. That's the, that four seventy-six is what we pay to SUEZ. I basically took a CPI increase, what a projected CPI increases, because that is our, that is basically our, part of our contract is after last year, last year we had no increase in charges, but going forward would be the CPI. So I anticipate, you know, just to be conservative, we took the CPI, we took the projected CPI and added that to the, uh, to the cost. So it's about another, uh, nine thousand dollars to, to the, um, to the, uh, to, to the, to the cost. So that's really the biggest, that's really the biggest thing with the, with the wastewater plant. Um, we're still, it, it's really not, we really haven't, we're not really not at the point yet, but obviously we're working with the township to determine what we're gonna do for the future. Um, that'll, that is, that'll come down the road. But, um, that's really all we have with the, with the, at least with the, with the, with the plant component. And then Dan, I think you can take over.
Did SUEZ do the capital?
Yes.
Project and they came in at really good budget?
Yes, yeah, they came in, yeah, we, we just basically had them do it.
Right.
And we didn't, we didn't go out for bid on it. It just, it was a lot, it was one of those situations where the, and, and we've done this with SUEZ before. They'll just, they'll just do the work. And, because they have, they have all the capabilities to do it. So.
Under the collection end of it, uh, the five fifty-one part, uh, again, the sewer, sewer maintenance work is one of those that is more on a, as needed basis as far as calls and such. But we have been also working on, uh, after the saw grate portion of our, of, uh, saw grate was completed, one of the things we have to do is keep up on our, our system and try to put in colorize, uh, large sections. Our, our goal is to do a third a year, keep up on that. Um, so that's, that's sixty-five thousand in there is to help with that part of it. And then the repair maintenance, uh, things are expensive. When you start fixing sewer lines and that's where that goes in there because we do end up having to have some repairs done. But that's, uh, I think our system's running pretty well at the moment. If we're not really well, I'd be honest, I'm, I'm still really surprised. We don't have sewer truck in this town, but it works out well with, uh, with, uh, McDonald's and, and not McDonald's, with, uh,
Homers.
Homers coming in quickly, uh, moments noticing me here in twenty minutes and help us jet lines out.
So they go in and sculpt these pipes is that what they do for that professional service?
Yes. And what we're trying to do is we'll take a section of, of line and we will jet it clean again and then run a camera up there to make sure there isn't anything that's happening that's going negative.
Isn't that how we found the problem right there by the lard piece? Last year when they camered it and then they put a liner in there.
Yeah, that's more likely that's where it came from. I think that's more, I think that's probably a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
But yeah, but we also utilize it for other parts of town here where we've had problems and, and, but we had one, uh, a, a street problem. I think it was, uh, I want to say it was Washington Street, one of those that people call and say they got backups in the water. And it's like, everything's fine. Well, came through, we jetted the whole lab, come in and jet it and, and carry it, find out where the problem was. And sure enough, there was a, a big water roots coming in right where their connection was and backing things up. And, and we go check things and everything's going fine, but we have to keep coming and take care of the problems to figure it out what's going on. And that's where we utilize the line. So we keep, we have to keep a record of this, a, a report through, through the state, through the asset management plan that was put together and such. So, uh, that's, that's one of the things that we do to that. Under the, uh, collection capital, that's Foreman Street, that should be starting up. Can we have a meeting Monday?
Yep.
Afternoon for the pre-construction meeting and then we should get started. Right now it's, uh, June, uh, early June, some schools out, but I think they're coming in, talking to us about starting in July. Find out Monday.
On Monday.
Find out Monday. We'll keep you posted. Uh, but that's, uh, that's all we have for, for sewer. There's a water. Water treatment. Do you recall, came in not too long ago and talked to you about the variable frequency drive on, on the high-service pumps and, uh, in the plant, we replaced one this year. There's three of them. So we're gonna budget for this year under the capital outlay for doing the other two. We also are budgeting, there's two line ponds, uh, every couple of years, one of them needs to be cleaned out. This is the time for all of those. And then, uh, G drive, uh, station, we need to do some upgrades there to keep up with, uh, uh, providing water to the, uh, to the township as well. But that, that, that's the work in there, but I think we're still talking through.
Yeah, we're still talking through that. Yeah, we're still talking through that process and we believe that, that improvement is solely for the township. Um, but with the water and sewer, with the water and sewer agreements, like with a capital project, with a sewer project, we can go to them upfront and say, hey, this is your cost, this is your amount, you can pay now or pay over time. And a lot of times they just cut us a check while with the water. We don't have that in our agreement. It's basically incorporated in the rate structure, but I anticipate that if not, most, if not all of that could be restructured in their wholesale rate to be passed on to them. But we're still in the beginning phases of figuring out how that's gonna go because there's, there's the question of whether or not their system can actually han- handle the direct, the direct line. Like, one of the things is rather than having all the water go to the pump, pump station on G, whether we can just directly connect it. There's, there's a direct connection right at Alden Nash that all we need to do is do about, what is it, about a hundred foot of line?
Run a pipe through.
Run the pipe through and we run it, we run it directly to. So they're, but they're trying to determine whether or not that's gonna cause an issue to their system. So they're, we're working on that.
Yeah, there's, there's some complicated areas because of high-pressure, low-pressure.
Yeah.
Both our tank, both our tanks. So that's all that's being invested in.
Yep.
Those are the, for the treatment end of it, that's what we have in there. Otherwise, for us, again, operation of water plant's pretty basic and that doesn't, uh, it doesn't change too much unless we make a lot more water, a lot less water, then things might change a little bit. Starts chemicals go, but the same operational costs are, are about average every year.
I see a, a lot of cost for public utilities, which I'm, I'm assuming is done LLP and gas and it seems like not just in this particular.
And our, and our water costs, and our water costs too.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it seems like a, a, a lot of cost throughout the whole city. We, we pay for that utility in all the budgets.
Yep.
Under the distribution end, uh, trying to do more, uh, proactive work on the lines or on the system with flushable hydrants, operating the valves, things of that nature. Again, these are requirements through the DEQ or Eagle now that, uh, in our asset management plan for water, that we have to do these things. Uh, just this week, we had to go out and inspect all our facilities to do our, update the report that we have to send to, uh, to Eagle through the asset management program. So that happened this week. So that's the cost for, for distribution. That was me reading, answering requests, uh, shut-off, turn-on, things of that nature. Uh, and water leak repairs, which we have to pop up all the time. Some of the, some of the big ticket items for, for water fund loads under the capital outlay, uh, under the distribution. We have, uh, money being set aside, forty thousand dollars, a total of fifteen towards, uh, uh, service line replacement. Again, talk about those, uh, lead service lines and other service lines that need to be replaced and then the investigation portion as well. Plus, we also are starting, uh, we have to redo our water reliability study. I think that's a five-year, every five years that has to be done. I think we're either right there at or you, I can't remember which now, but we're working through that as well. Uh, we'll get that thing through. But again, the, the service line investigations we talked earlier, that has to do with, uh, uh, getting the lead out of the system and, and we're gonna do our due diligence and work through that and get that taken care of as quickly as we can. Uh, other things under that, again, we have a, a large amount for, uh, repair and maintenance that goes towards emergency repairs and then the parts. That's something to keep in mind whenever we do a, a, a water main break. Seems to happen in the streets. And we have to go back and make sure that all gets put back together as well. So that gets a little pricey when you start adding the asphalt in there and working to get all that done. That's what we have under the water. Any questions up there? And then, uh, lastly will be like equipment funding?
Yeah.
Uh, this year, we, uh, a couple of things we're trying to replace. One is another pickup truck with a service box on it. Keep our pickup to, we have a lot of, our plan is to replace little public works vehicles and then move that around and replace one of the older service vehicles, the one at the wastewater plant that's you know, uh, replacement. So then, oh, they don't get to do one, they'll get one that's better than what they have. And then at the water plant, they have a, uh, a, a car that they use that they drive around, uh, town that we don't dare take out of town anymore because it's in, it's an old police car. It was in great shape, but we got it. But what we're trying to do in, in little, with the police department's moving towards a hybrid vehicle, we thought maybe that's, thing of the future is to go for electric car and then get a charge station and use that vehicle. Again, it, it goes out every, split up every other day or so, it takes samples and such. But it's also used to run to town, to Grand Rapids, drop things off for Lansing. And, and then when there's a, a conference, nobody wants to take that vehicle to it because they don't know if it's gonna make it there safely. So they always take one to pick up town. We wanna use that vehicle for that as well. So they have a conference in, in Lansing for water because those aren't gonna be starting back up again. That we make sure we get to them, so the guys get the training that they need and their CECs and such. But then they'll have a, a reliable vehicle to get there that, trying to utilize their latest technology, utilize electric vehicle. We do our part to, to start that process and go through. Our equipment, uh, previously we had a, we had Ralph that was the mechanic that took care of everything, did a great job. He's still available for that, but we now, uh, utilize the, the farming a lot of our repair work out to either, uh, the, the truck here in town or truck and trailer at home and, uh, although in other places that have the professional staff on board. Ralph, oh, Ralph is, uh, licensed to work on things like this. He's the only one in our facility that is. We have to make sure that what's kept up to something. We have good equipment here that needs to be kept in, in good shape. The guys, I'll give them a lot, lot of credit that they take care of things very well here. I'm, I'm very pleased with them. The guys, they're, they're, the guys, they all work hard. We have a good group of people that very, uh, community conscious of trying to take care of all of the citizens in town and our systems. And, and I, I feel very, very blessed to be working with these guys that, that I don't have to go up and babysit and keep a, keep the fun on because they're not out wasting time, they're not out wasting supplies. They're all helping in every way they can and, and they make my job a lot easier than I'd ever anticipated. Uh, so we do, uh, the new hiring, we, we hired earlier this year, Jeff is doing a great job. Uh, uh, the new person that we have coming from the cemetery, I'll be honest with you, he came highly recommended from other workers at the city that, uh, that really helped push it over the edge. Just why do I want to hire him? My, my thought, my, my discussion with the workers is always this. If you guys know people that you know will work, that you know you'll work well together with, those are the people that will fit in. Those are the people we want to work here with us. We don't want to hire people's friends that, if you're not comfortable with working with them, don't recommend them. But this, uh, Darren came very highly recommended by more than one person at EPO. So we're feeling pretty happy at the moment with that. That's, uh, that's what we have with, uh, all the things that are probably worked at the moment.
All right. Um, when's the food gonna be ready?
I'm gonna leave here just a minute.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, why don't we just keep moving along? We probably can just eat and.
If my, while you're on this page and you know I had a question.
Yep.
I'll, 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 you can leave it on any page.
Sure.
Let's say you're looking at the equipment costs and when I say where we're at year-to-date, if you budgeted at a hundred and two thousand for twenty, twenty twenty-two, and we're in three months into our fiscal year, I like to see the hundred and two thousand, but then I'd like to see where we're at year-to-date.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, so.
My big thing is I don't wanna seem red.
Yep.
I like green.
Yep.
As far as that, but, but if there's a red, then it's adjusting my.
Yeah, sure.
On that. And we may be good on everything else. Those are the things I like to see in the budget.
Sure, okay. So what we do is.
Maybe it's only me, maybe the rest don't care.
So what I, I mean, BSNA doesn't really do red and green, um, with.
Well, I understand.
But so.
Or caution, the yellow, hey, we're.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm expecting that this is not gonna hit.
So.
It's gonna put Chris over budget by fifteen grand.
So normally what I do is I look at, so this is, this is the amend, this is the amended budget. Um, so this is the amended budget for the current fiscal year. This year we've spent this amount up to the, up, we've spent this amount. So I anticipate we, I anticipate, but also what happened was, I anticipate by the end of this year, we're gonna buy another truck. So this is where I'm getting, we only budgeted this amount because we thought we were gonna buy this truck. We were gonna buy a truck last year, which isn't on here anywhere. So since this is a pay-as-you-go budget, I know we spent twelve thousand so far on the equip, basically for the lawnmower and there was some other equipment we, if we replaced. But we're, we're gonna come in very good on this number, but when it comes to this one, we're gonna buy this truck. We're gonna buy this truck, um, probably right before June thirty. So that'll put us at the eighty-seven five by the time you put the, uh, put the truck in the cab. So that's where you're coming in there. And then what I normally do is what, what I normally do with like with our operational line items. So right around January is when I start looking, because I really can't tell you, I really can't tell you if we're gonna start going over or have to start watching it until January. So when I get to January, I start looking at it. I'm like, okay, this line item, we spent a lot on, like, perfect example. I will go, well, I'm, I won't, I won't go to it, but the police part-time line item, we budget seventy-five thousand dollars. I knew, I knew it before this, but Jan, but when January hit, I knew we were gonna go over that amount. So I started watching it and then I, when I did, when I do the amendments in March, I start doing the amendments then. I, I start gauging what I think it really is gonna be. And I've also, I'm still looking at it. I think even what I haven't projected at for the police part-time is gonna be even higher than that. So, um, that's how, that's kinda how I, that's kinda how I've always interpreted it. So, I mean, that's just my, my way of how I budget.
And then my thinking is that if you budget twenty-two, you only spend twelve. Where's another ten thousand dollars enough to then go back into general fund? Or is this?
Yeah, it goes in, so, yeah, but we don't.
Next year?
Yeah, so what I norm, a lot of times what I do, if I don't think, what I'll, I'll, I'll go through with all the department heads. If I don't, if they, like, especially at Cap. If I don't, if they, like especially on capital stuff, if we don't think we're going to spend it this year, I take it away. I just, I, I, I zero out that, that line item for that, for that expense. And then if it's something, I'll just say to them, do you want to just move it to next year? And they'll say, yeah, we'll put it in next year. So we have it. Um, most of the time, that's how I do it. Now with the pay as you go account, like your DDA, your water fund, your sewer fund, all those, those are all pay as you go accounts. So if I, if I have a, you know, if I have an expense that I didn't do this year, I normally carry it over to the next year, but there's also, since it is pay as you go, a lot of times what happens is we think we're going to do that project by the end of the year and we keep it. And then, but it turns out, we ended up, we couldn't do it till July. So then we, we may not have originally budgeted it, but we spent, it, it, it may look like we're going over budget, but in actuality, we're really not because it's the cash, the cash flows for those, the cash flow, the cash flows for those accounts are a lot different than the general fund account. Because, well, with the, with the general fund, there's specific rules you have to follow with the general fund that you don't necessarily have to follow with the enterprise fund, so to speak. So, I mean, I, it'll, there's some years it looks like, let's say we only budgeted twenty thousand for a capital expense, but at the end of the year, we ended up spending eighty. Well, the reason we probably spent eighty, it was, it was either A, was something we never could have thought of, or B, it was something that we didn't do the year prior that was budgeted, that we carried over, but we just, we didn't, we didn't carry it over at the beginning of the budget year. We ended up having to pick it up later in the year. That's a lot of times how, especially with all the other accounts, it happens a lot more with these.
Do I care if Chris spent fifteen hundred dollars to go on a train, eight more digits, but not really?
No.
I think it's the larger ticket.
It's the larger ticket item, yeah. It, I mean.
It's for me when it gets to that point.
Yeah, the biggest one for me this year was the police line item, but that was totally out of our control. The, a lot of times like you'll see the capital stuff, you know, I, I pay good attention. I mean, I pay very close attention to the capital stuff. The only, the times you're really going to see those expenditures, it's either going to be a capital expense or it's going to be, um, or it's going to be, you know, a personnel cost that was unforeseen.
Do you have a, maybe I, I missed it, but do you have a set aside every year for a vehicle replacement fund? Whether you use it or not, it stays in that.
That's the equi, that's the equipment fund.
At the equipment fund of twenty-five.
Yeah, we pay rentals, we pay ra, you'll see in every budget, we, rentals, we pay rentals from all the different, when they use the equipment, it goes to the equipment fund. So one of the things that we're, that I'm going to have Sue start doing this year is, let's say we budget twenty-three thousand dollars in rentals out of the line item. But in actuality, we maybe only spent twelve. Well, we're, we're expecting to buy equipment based on the amounts we have projected going in. So what I'm telling Sue is on June thirty, what we're going to start doing rather, so that, so we can avoid having to put general fund dollars in in addition to the rental costs. What we're going to start doing is, I told Sue, we're going to go through all those accounts and if they're under, if they're under projection, what their, what their rental costs are, we're going to take that money. We're going to spend, we're going to spend that money anyway as a rental. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to carry it over into the equipment fund. So then we don't have to worry about it. So whatever's on paper, if, even at the end of the year, let's say they only spent half of it, we're going to put it all in. So the equipment fund is well, well funded. So when we need equipment, I don't have to go get fifty thousand dollars for the general fund to make sure I'm not in a deficit, in a deficit in the equipment fund.
Knowing that Dan needed a truck four years ago, to me, I would have said it's a forty thousand dollar truck. I'm going to put ten thousand dollars a year set aside. And it's always going to be in the equipment fund, knowing that in four years, I'll have forty.
Yeah. And Ralph, and Ralph keeps very good tabulations as to when we need to replace our vehicles. The, the problem, a lot of times what happens is, um, you know, like last year, we were going to buy, we were going to buy two trucks. Well, we didn't buy any of the trucks because COVID hit. So we just decided, well, let's just hold off. We'll do it, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do it down the road. But yeah, we don't, with the equipment fund, we basically, we have, you know, we know what our dollar amounts are coming. We, we, we're going to do a better job, we're, we're going to do a better job to make sure that we're, at the end of the year, we're supplementing the equipment fund as we need to. But it, um, it'll, uh, that's how, I mean, that's kind of how we do it.
Yeah, okay. Pretty much, yeah. I'm good.
Look, you know, you've got some runners. There's two, there's two ducks running around on top of your building.
I bet there's a duck that were out front.
That's dinner.
They were in the back.
Oh.
Cause they ran, they were nesting over in the corner.
I bet you got water on your.
On the end, and now they're, see his head?
That's what they're swimming.
I'm sitting here watching.
There's a whole pond up there.
We only got a couple more things, so I don't know. It probably is easy to just eat and do the present, because I'm just presenting the DDA and the, you know, the funds. We can just keep moving and be done. All right.
I don't have to go in there anymore, okay?
I noticed we didn't put footnotes in.
For the budget.
Are these labeled, Suzie?
Yeah.
This, this feels hot. I don't like the salad.
Normally, yeah, normally they print out the footnote. Maybe we just forgot to print out the footnote.
This feels hot.
I had the deli.
This feels hot.
That looks like Marty's.
This feels cold, so maybe this is my salad. I didn't want chicken.
Are we missing one?
Is that a salad?
This looks like the southwest wrap.
Well, maybe, maybe they, maybe.
Shrimp.
Did somebody more than order a salad?
We ordered a salad.
Yep.
So we got.
I don't have, I, I wanted a Caesar.
That's the shrimp.
Okay.
I can go without. What did they charge you?
Let me call over there.
What did they charge you?
Uh, I don't have the receipt.
Yeah, it was right there in the bank. Oh.
Hey, that's kind of like Monday night.
That's.
Remember you got shirted a burrito?
You didn't get the grilled chicken salad.
I, I just wanted a Caesar.
Just a Caesar, no chicken, right?
Yeah, right, exactly.
So which one did you say was the shrimp? That's the shrimp.
I'm going to run back over there.
Don't worry about it.
No, no, let me run back over there.
I'll share my shrimp with you.
Yep, yep, yep.
I know. I have to hope.
I thought you were coming, staying for lunch. You were going to go, I thought. I thought you were going to go.
Would you like a donut?
I'm sorry. I thought you were just coming to your budget and going. Yeah, that's what you told, uh.
Suzie, don't worry about it. I'll get something out of the way. We're only going to be forty-five minutes. I'll get something out of, out of the way out of town.
Are you sure?
Yes, just have a seat.
Well, we'll call it in for you when you leave and then you can bring it home.
I gotta go up to the waggle after this.
Southwestern salad.
That's Leo's.
What's that?
That's a southwest.
Salad.
The other thing. I'll eat it.
This is yours, yeah. Thank you very much. Jim, I feel bad.
Yeah, well, you'll make it up to me later. That's probably one of the few that answered you in your email.
You were the first.
But, but it is, they are big, they are big enough to share.
No, they're huge.
Yeah, you want some fries, Jim?
No, no.
Yeah, we forgot, they forgot food on Monday.
But that was sneakers.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Oh, wow, great. We should have a disco. We should have.
One of the wimpy old napkins.
I, I know, I just spread it out across them last week.
And you know, don't you ever have an expiration date, right, Cliff?
Where'd you get the deluxe napkin?
Out of the DPW fund?
If you want, I can keep moving.
Yep.
Jim, you want to catch up?
All right, so DDA, um, DDA this year, um, in the budget, there's a history of all the projects we've done since the DDA was created in nineteen ninety-three. The DDA's done a lot of projects. Um, this year, um, as I said before, the DDA seeing about a signi, we saw a significant increase in our revenue, more than what we had projected at the beginning of the year. Um, as, as I said, the, the main reason why is the sales from the marijuana facility, of the marijuana facilities was increasing the. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you need that. And, uh, so that's really been the, that's the biggest expense. We did project seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue for the upcoming year. That's probably a low ball amount. It's probably actually going to be a little bit more. Um, but we try to be, we try to be conservative when we get the, when we get these, when we do the, uh, when we do the taxable value calculations. Um, capital outlay for the, for the DDA this year, um, their, their big projects are, um, we set aside, um, about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars or about hundred forty-five thousand for, um, for the Amity project. We also set aside, um, twenty-five thousand dollars for the bricks for the showboat. Um, the DDA will pay for the brick installation for that once the product, once the product, once we get to that point. Actually, Dan's working on it right now. Um, also, we are, uh, setting money aside about a hundred forty-five thousand dollars for the, um, the cost to recon, uh, to pave Valley Vista from Bowes to Maine. So that's where you get the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in capital outlay costs. That's what, that's what those three projects entail. Um, ma, maintenance, um, portion of the Sexton salary, and then we do charge time when the, when the DPW works in the, uh, in the DD, in the, in the downtown development authority. Don't ever tell Dick Went that we do this. He, he strokes out when I tell him, um, so I don't tell him. But, um, we do have some personnel maintenance costs. The administration, um, yeah, we have the administrat, we have community pro promotions. So there's two community promotion line items in the DDA budget. One, I'm trying to find it.
One is two four eight four six three eight eighty.
Four six three? Okay. Four six three eight eighty.
When you retire, you know this stuff right on.
So.
I know everything.
The forty-eight, six twenty, that is the total cost for, that we calculated to operate the social district. Between the police, DPW, market, you know, any marketing we got to do, um, any, anything we got to, like fire, buy firewood, all that stuff. Will come out of that line item. And then there's another community outline, promotion line item under, um, Department seven forty. That community promotions are marketing. So that's the cost that we, that we provide the chamber to run the marketing plan to, um, sponsor their, um, the Christmas through Lowell, the, um, the, um, the Riverwalk concerts, um, all of, all of those different things come out of that line item. So Liz will come about twice a year for marketing funds and, and we, and I, and I usually, I go to her when I do the budget right at the beginning, say, hey, what do you think you're going to need this year? And that, that's how we come up with, with the number. So, and then also, we have to, we have the, uh, we have two, we have two debt payments we need to make. One is, uh, the, uh, cost for the, uh, to pay for, uh, two thirty-eight High Street. We're in year two of that repayment. Um, it's a five-year, it's a five-year repayment from the DDA to the light and power, um, for, for them buying that property for the city. Um, and then we also are paying, um, well, we'll transfer to the general fund, but we're going to be paying the general fund bond for this building, which is three hundred twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars. Um, I did transfer a hundred eighty-four thousand to the local street fund for, for Amity, um, that, so that, because it'll come out of that, it'll come, it'll, we'll, we'll put it all in the local street fund. So it all gets accounted out of the local street fund. And that's where we, we get, um, we do, we do a cash flow for the DDA. So we're projecting with all the projects we have, um, at the end of this year, we'd have a four hundred thousand dollar ending balance with next year. With the capital projects, we have just under sixty-two thousand, which still about ten percent of our revenue capture. So nothing too alarming. We are, you know, DDA is doing a lot of projects. DDA alleviates the city in a lot of things that, quite frankly, that if, if the DDA wasn't there, the city would have to pay for, which would then strain the general fund budget. So they do a lot of, they do a lot of different, a lot of things that help out the, the, the general fund. Any questions?
Mike, I think there's some misconceptions out in the neighborhoods about where does the actual funding come from, the DDA? I think that they think it's businesses are just writing checks to the city.
No.
Cover all this stuff. So I think there's some misconception of that. Where does it come from?
Their tax capture, all of their taxes they pay, just like every, every resident, every property owner in the city, their tax capture, their taxes that they pay, every increase in value, any increase in value since nineteen ninety-three, that increased taxes goes to the DDA fund. So the, the only, so, so the county taxes that they pay, the county doesn't get those taxes, the DDA does. The, the live, the KDL, the taxes that are levied for the KDL, the KDL doesn't get those taxes, the DDA does.
And these are off of property taxes.
Correct.
Not sales taxes, nothing.
Nope, just property.
Of the properties in the.
In the DDA district. So.
What is the reach of the DDA?
Our DDA goes, starts at, starts at, uh, Washington Street, goes all the way to all Nash. And it includes Bowes Road, and then it, it, it goes up Hudson and includes all the, uh, factories on Foreman.
So the current new businesses that are moving into these.
They're all in the DDA.
Properties, that money will be that extra tax.
Going to the DDA, going to the DDA.
And we don't know what that dollar amount is going to be as of yet.
We, we, we can only project and, and we, we tend to project low, so.
Thinking for clarifying, because I had some misconceptions of where that all things do. So it's helpful.
Think, just best way to explain it, the majority of commercial taxes in the city, commercial owners' property taxes go to the DDA.
Atwood was one of the businesses that's not in the DDA.
Right.
Could the historical district ask for money from the DDA?
Well.
Sorry.
I know what you, I know where you're going with this. Your city attorneys will tell you no.
Really?
Yes, because it's tech, because if you're using them for facades, it is technically a lending of credit. You're using prop, because you're using public dollars for private purposes, which you cannot do.
Well, I'm just thinking, because you can't, if you, if you have a, I can't just buy a door for my building. I have to go and get it approved and also the, oh, we, we just asked the community fund for refunding. I asked for this month.
So basically, I can explain what happened with the community fund. You know, you put in a certain dollar amount. They only have X amount of dollars to give. And basically what we did this year for that allocation, I asked, because I asked Lori, because Lori runs, I go, what do you need? But, you know, because the community fund is asking me, what do you, what can you get by with the lease and get by? And the number was sixty thousand dollars, what I was told. So I conveyed that to the community foundation, they gave sixty thousand dollars. Now, if there's a year we have a hundred thousand dollars, did you put a hundred thousand? Then we can give it, we can give it. But, I mean, you know, you have a lot of, I mean, this year, especially with the showboat, they're, they get a lot of projects that they're, they're in the fair and the trail and all that stuff. It's just, it's tough.
And everybody's that.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mike, because we were talking this morning and I know it's a little off subject, but. possibly asking trails, parking rack, if they would be willing to pony up some money for the new public restrooms.
Not a bad idea.
I mean, because it is gonna be used for what they're doing, and it might, it'd be, if they could do twenty grand a piece, I mean, it's. I mean, it's not much money, but it's, it's a step.
I agree.
That's a conversation.
That's a project they, you know, the trail authority could probably do. But.
But they, they could be five, ten years.
They probably are, because the problem is their, their money's all tied into the trail right now.
Exactly, so, yeah.
And they're trying to finish that up. So. Any more questions on the DDA? All right, I'm gonna go to the data processing fund real quick. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back. For the building fund.
No, I'm good. I brush your knee when I eat. Plus I had another donut, so I.
I can use it to sit on. It's a high. It's a, tell him it's a future hockey puck.
I don't think I'd be playing back to the little one.
He doesn't feel pain like the rest of us. He's a hockey player.
All right, real quick, I'm gonna go through the. This year, we set up a fire capital fund. So what I want, what, what the plan is, one of the things that I've, I've, I've observed is, you know, probably every twenty years, or every, every couple of years, we have to buy fire trucks. But the fire trucks usually lap, their normal life is about twenty years. So this year, we have a big expense with the, uh, with the, uh, with the, with the fire truck. It's a hun, we anticipate it's gonna be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what I, what I am proposing to do in the budget is, um, I put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in for, transferred from the general fund, um, to this fire fund. So when the time comes for us to buy our fire truck, we buy it out of this fund. So we're hoping we get some assistance from the community foundation. Right now, the fire truck, it's a six hundred fifty thousand dollar truck. The cities are, the county's gonna pay two hundred thousand dollars for the truck. The remaining four fifty is gonna come from each of the jurisdictions, so it's about one fifty each. I believe we'll probably, it'll probably be around one twenty-five is what we end up paying. And then if the, um, at the end of the year, we'll have twenty-five thousand dollars. I know there's gonna be future capital requests that the fire authority is gonna be coming to us for, because they have to upgrade a lot of their, uh, their air tanks and, and, and their, and their, and their, um, equipment. So one of the things I'm gonna try and propose every year is rather than having to, you know, put panic and scramble and cut other things and put, you know, let's say I got a fifty, let's say I got a seventy thousand dollar expense. But if I put twenty-five thousand dollars a year, every year into the account, when it comes time to buy those trucks or whatever, I have the money there, cause like the next fire truck is probably about twenty years out after we buy this county truck. I can start setting money aside every year, so then when the time comes for, for our share of the truck, we have the money, it's not an issue. I don't have to worry about pulling back off the general fund as much if I'm making a smaller contribution every year, rather than making these big, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar extra to the general fund is a lot, it's, it's a lot. So, um, trying to be proactive and is what.
Over twenty years, can you invest that fund to make money on it?
Oh, yeah, you, you, it'll be a.
Twenty-five, just sit there, make nothing.
Well, you can't, you can't put it in like mutual funds or any statement, but you can put it in interest-bearing accounts, and we do that.
Okay.
So, um, so, yeah, you could, you could then generate a little interest as well as that money comes in, absolutely.
Yeah, over twenty years.
Yeah, I mean, granted, interest rates aren't very high.
Hey, Suzie's white salve or something, you know?
That's a heck of an interest rate. But, um, so, yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the things I proposed this year in the, in the budgets that we start putting this, I guess.
Where does the devaluation and the, of the equipment from, is that in another line item, if you can devalue that over time?
In the equipment fund, there is an equipment fund to pre, we do account for.
Depreciation, I saw that up there.
We, yeah, it, it's not our equipment, so it's not really cross for to, to depreciate.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
But I hear what you're saying. So that's one fund. Trying to find the OPEB fund.
Know your numbers, Jack. Well, I sit by it. Makes me look smarter.
All right, I'm gonna go to the data processing fund. So data processing fund, it's an internal service fund that we use that accounts for all of our technology for our city departments. So all of our computer costs, anything pertaining to our IT, it comes out of this account. We have, we have some major projects, uh, as you know, Betsy and Tony from Adorio, they, they do all of our, of our IT support. This year, our biggest costs are the following projects. So we have a three-year agreement with Low Light and Power to pay about sixty-five thousand dollars of a, uh, secure, of a major security upgrade we did to the, uh, to the whole computer network that, that City and, and Light and Power run off of. So the third year of pay, paying that back. We have two project, so five years ago, we switched phones. And there's two projects that we have to do roughly every five years that we have to take into account. This year, we have to do an IT data center project. Basically, we have a server for the phones, but it's going to, we're gonna have to upgrade the server and then eventually put it in the cloud. Um, so these two projects, the, and Charlie could explain this better than I can, but these two projects are gonna be, are, we're gonna have to do in the next fiscal year. So we figured out with the IT data center, with the server, with, with this project where we update this data center, where we store the information, we're gonna split that cost in half with Light and Power. It's about a, it's about a seventeen thousand dollar upgrade, so Light and Power and the city are gonna pay half of that. Then we got the phone server upgrade. The first third of that cost is gonna be paid for, we're gonna split the first third of the cost with Light and Power for the phone server upgrade. And then the remaining seventy-nine percent of that project is gonna come from us, because we have them, it's based off the number of phones that we have in the entire network. So, um, that's gonna be the ten thousand four hundred dollars. And then we have four office computers we need to replace. We keep a, we keep a schedule, we try to replace the computers, the office computers for each person every five years, but it's really been about six or seven since we've done them. So, um, those are the major capital projects. The, the issue with this fund is, I don't believe we were really funding it very well. We were getting to a point where we were, our fear is that we have, we run a, a fund into deficit. And if we run a fund into the deficit, then we have to, with the state, we have to file what's called a deficit and elimination plan to, uh, reduce that, to eliminate that, that negative, uh, debt. So what we did this year is I increased between the water, the, the water, the wastewater and the, and the general fund. In the current fiscal year, we, we up, we upgraded the amount they're gonna contribute to the fund by about forty thousand dollars between all those accounts. So we were contributing about eighty thousand dollars to the fund every year. We're gonna put about a hundred and twenty now, because it's, it's getting to be that with all this technology, all the things that we're doing, we're spending a lot more money on, on the, on these issues. Now, one of the issues we are having that has really come to my attent-, you know, it's been kinda coming to my attention a lot lately, but I'm gonna finally, I'm gonna, I'm now at the point where I think we can address it, is we're getting a lot of bit, it's like ever since two, last year, year and a half ago, we upgraded to Windows ten, so we upgraded our servers to Windows ten. And it seems like we have more problems now, ever since we upgraded these servers, that we're having to bring IT in. We're having issues with our networks, we're having all these iss-, we're having all these bugs that, you know, then the internet goes down. And we've been having, it's been nothing but problems. But one of the pro, one of the things we're noticing is, is that our bills for our IT consultants are just, they're just, they're getting, they're getting to be a bit much. So I'm gonna be sitting, I'm gonna be sending actually an email to Tony and Betsy this week, trying to sit down with them to figure out how we can get this, these costs reduced, because it's just getting to be too much. Maybe we need to go to a retainer fee with them rather than an hourly fee. It's, it's getting to that point. And, you know, I mean, when Steve Dockers was here, him and I were talking about maybe just merging our pool, merging our costs together and hiring an IT person just for City Hall, like, uh, as a city employee. But our concern is, is that if we find somebody like that, there's gonna be network stuff that maybe that person can't do, that we're still gonna have to contract out some of the networking stuff. So ever since Charlie came aboard, you know, we talked about it again, and it's kinda like, that's kinda the issue is, you know, we're gonna, you know, you'll bring an IT get person in, let's say, let's say you're paying them sixty grand a year. But you, or, exactly, yeah. Yeah, you're gonna be paying more.
Depends on what his certificate, if you want.
Exactly.
Cisco certifications and Dow certificate, and, and, and then keeping that guy fresh on it.
Right.
Date and keep his.
Which is why.
CCA and a CCP and.
Which is why I'm so, I'm not so sure I wanna bring it in-house. But, um, the IT costs are getting, but we've, we've upgraded a lot of technology too. I, I can't say that we haven't, but it's, it's getting to be, it's getting to be an issue. So it's something that I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down with them about.
Hourly rates are probably more than dickens in right terms.
Um, actually, no, they're eighty-five dollars an hour. It is. However, a lot of times what happens is we use Core HiCom for a lot of our networks, networking stuff that's above, really above what they do. So the problem we have is we call, we'll call, we'll call Betsy, who then calls Core HiCom, so then we're getting, we're getting hit twice. So it's like, well, how can we, how can we, how can we better manage this? So. I mean, we've kinda gotten to the point now where we don't call Betsy unless we absolutely have to. And unfortunately, we've had a lot of issues where we've just had to. And it's, it's getting, but it's getting, but i- it's irritating, because it's like ever, we, we hot, we, we went to Windows ten, we did all these upgrades to make things more efficient. And it just seems like we have more hiccups with networking things, and then there'll, there'll be patches that come up that update in the middle of the night, and then the next day, you can't get into your server, and it's just things like that, and.
Thing is too, you, you wanna control when those updates happen.
Correct.
Humanly possible, so somebody isn't doing it, and you come in and you're not aware.
Right. And they normally are pretty good about a lot of the updates they tell us about, but it's happened where, you know, something happens in the middle of the night and something updated, and we didn't know about it. And and that seems to be like whenever we have the problem. So that is something that we're, that we are paying attent-, that I know I'm paying attention to. Chris has been really paying attention to it in, in the police department, cause they have, they have a tremendous amount of IT stuff, obviously with the computers and all that. And, you know, him and I have kinda been looking at the bills, it's like, whoa, so.
Are you looking to buy towers or new, nice new, nice new windows?
I think we're trying to, we're trying to, oh, oh, with the laptops?
Yeah, with these four computers, you said.
Oh, uh, probably a couple of that, I like laptop, mine's one of them, mine is a laptop, will be a laptop. Couple of them, I think, a couple of them, I think they've been just using the desktops. And it's really, I kinda give them the choice, you want the desktop, you want the laptop? Me, I like laptop. I've gotten used to the laptop, so.
Yeah, do you girls work off of multiple monitors at a time? I got this one off this one, so you got either three or four monitor guards on the back of it. And those hard to get off of laptop, so.
And I have two monitors on my, on my laptop.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah. And it works, you know, for me, it work.
Girl, it's not an iPad.
I use the iPad for meetings, yeah.
Yeah, iPad, yeah.
Yeah, I use that, and then I keep a cer-, then the city gives me a cer-, the ci-, well, with Saw, I got a Surface that I use working remotely from home. Cause I do, I know you don't believe me, but I do a lot of work at night, so. Yeah.
Cause he's often here in the day, he has to catch up.
One day. But no, I mean, there's a lot of times I'll take work home at night and I'll just go online and, and, and go, connect to the network, so. So that's really it for, for that budget. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to go through some of the equip, funds that we, that you don't normally see, just so we can see them, and I'm trying to find them. I, yeah, the airport fund, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't look at the airport fund, cause I don't really get involved in the airport unless there's something I have to get involved in, but. No cliff, please, no golf course. I'm all about roundabout.
We gotta get rid of the bore.
So.
It really isn't the airport, I mean, it runs.
It runs itself.
And it, it's, we never have an issue.
No.
It's like the waste treatment plant, it just does what it does.
Yeah. Yeah, the, all the, all the, uh, all the revenue they generated basically from their hangar fees.
Yeah, right.
And, or, or, and their gas sales. And everything that they have, you know, every expenditure they have comes from those fees. We don't use any tax dollars for the airport, we never have. If they got capital outlet projects, it comes out of the funds that they, that they generated from revenues. I'm not, I'm not aware of any capital projects this year they're doing. They did a couple, a couple of years back. And they're, they're pretty self-sustaining. Casey will call me if there's an issue, normally there isn't. There were a couple of years ago, were some things we had to crack down on, but for the most part, it's been, you know, they ju, they generate on their own, and it's been a, um, it's been a pretty, you know, it's been a profitable venture, you know, it's, it's been a, a good venture for the city. And, and, and Casey runs a, I mean, he runs a pretty tight ship out there, so. We have well relatively few issues out there. Um, trying to find, is the building fund in here? The building fund. Building in the OPEB, I don't see it.
The OPEB fund?
Yeah, I don't see it.
That's behind, um, seven, one, seven, three, seven, other post-inventor benefits?
Fund seven, three, seven?
One, oh, nine.
Page one, oh, nine? Okay, all right. So this account, this is the OPEB fund. Basically, what we do is we pay the retirement healthcare out of this line item. So what we do is we take the allocations for all the employees that are, well, one of, one of the things we do is I set aside five thousand dollars for every employee that I know is gonna retire in the very, in the next, in the near future, I put that money into this account. We also had the twenty thousand dollars that we got from the sale of Bowes Road a few years ago, that money goes in, that money's already in the account and accounted for. We also, what we do is, um, the current, the employees that are currently retired that we're paying for, there's a, there's still a cost allocation for them, percentage, like say, for example, perfect example, Joe Baker, Joe Baker's probably paid out of every fund in the cit, in the city, and there's a percentage allocation for his benefits. So we take the, we take his premium cost for, for an annual basis, and then we, 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 we spread the payment of that cost from all the different accounts that we would pay when he was employed for his, for his benefits out of those line items. So it goes in, it goes into this account, and then we, we make the payments for the healthcare out of this account. So we've generated quite a bit of, uh, revenue, um, over the last few years that will have money set aside. So eventually, the goal is, is once we get this fund. So eventually the goal is, is once we get this fund to a certain point, we don't have to make those at cost allocations from the other funds to the account. The account can pay for the healthcare itself is what we're, what we're trying to do. And then eventually we'll have the retirement healthcare, uh, issue completely, completely eliminated from our books. Hope in the next, about the next, the next twenty years, you'll have this issue completely eliminated. But we're trying to, we're trying to set aside, we're trying to set money aside now so we have these funds. And so that's kinda what this, what this account does.
So are you saying we have a two hundred and eighty thousand dollars fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I, am I right on that, Sue?
Yes.
And again, we're investing that in the least we can.
Yeah, it, yeah, I mean, now you, now you, now you're starting to get to a point where you're gonna start getting a little bit of interest off it.
Right, at that time, yeah.
You know, but. Right. But we, last year, well, two years ago, we started this fund. And, uh, it, it just, it, it, I just, I'm trying to prepare ahead of time because I know this stuff is coming. I'd rather be ahead of, out in front of something and be able to manage it over time rather than just wait till all these people retire and then now I got a bigger problem. So that's kinda what I'm, what I'm kinda trying, what I'm trying to do with this, with this account.
So based on the funding we got and, and we had no retirees, how long would that, that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars last? Is it five thousand dollars a year per person?
I put five thousand dollars a year per person and then whatever the, whatever the current employees are, are that are retired, we're putting their, we're putting their allocation into there and paying their healthcare out of this account. But if I put, but I put for all the retired, for all the employ, we have had about, it's been about, it's about ten employees is impacted. So we've been putting, I've been putting, and it's all been general fund dollars for the most part, um, into this account.
So you're saying there's ten employees today taking healthcare benefits?
No.
No?
I think there's only.
I'm saying, I'm saying that I believe there were, when I started this, there were ten employees that I knew were gonna retire um, in the next five to seven years at that point, or maybe five to ten years. So I started setting money aside then.
And they can only draw this until they're sixty-five or?
They get five years or age sixty-five. So, um, if you retire at fifty-five, which MERS allows, we would cover you till you're age sixty, but once you're sixty, you have to get your own insurance. So a lot of times what our employees do, they'll go to their sixty and then get the five years from us. And then when they turn sixty-five, then they go, they go to Medicare. So that's what, you know, that's what a lot of our employees do. Which, you know, it, it, it's easier for them, like Joe Baker, Joe Baker did that, Leslie did that, um, Luann did that. Teresa, well, Teresa, Teresa retired at like fifty-seven. Teresa's only got like maybe two more years left that we're gonna be providing for her and Mark. But, and then unfortunately Bob Robinson passed, so, and we were, we were subsidizing him as well. So. Any more questions? That's really all I have from the budget, I mean, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, we tried.
So will we be voting on this or this Monday or two Mondays from now?
So you'll have, we'll set the public hearing Monday night. And then the following, Monday the nineteenth, it'll be presented for approval.
Are we gonna get this in a hard copy again, like we have in the past?
Well, I mean, I can get you a paper copy if you want, um, just trying to save on paper costs, but if you want one, we can get you one.
Cause I know in years past, we've gotten those dividers with everything all in it. I kinda like that because then I can go back through my head and any thoughts or questions?
If you want that, we can get it to you, but just, I was trying to save money on paper.
You want a hard copy sent into me and I'll print it up?
Any other questions?
I'm not nearly the numbers guy this guy is, but.
He's pretty, he's pretty good.
I just would like to say that I'm impressed with the way you handle budgetary matters. I think part of the challenges that have been dumped on us have been some previous administrations not looking ahead for possible, like this last thing, you got a quarter of a million socked away, we didn't lose anything. Anyway, I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. It's not just me, it's.
Now can I get some more money for the?
It is interesting to see how we've been, we've been pretty diligent and hard to keep ourselves in line in the budget. This year, the City of Grand Rapids also hit a wall where they're, they're struggling a little bit.
Gotta remember though. Something Grand Rapids does that we don't, they have an income tax. They're getting hit by the income tax.
Yep.
Which, we, if we did implement the income tax, it would've been a nightmare this year.
But that is something when we talked about it, we, we were highly aware of, this could happen. Now we've seen the fruits of the could-happens.
In hindsight, I'm glad the income tax didn't pass because it would've been an absolute nightmare this year. Anything else? We try to make it simple.
They are getting, well, this is my, what? They are getting easier, more, I don't know if it's just I'm getting used to seeing these numbers, but it's just getting to be more, uh, easier to follow, easier to understand.
Once you, yeah, it's something that once you, once you do it for a couple of years, you get, you know, you, it does get easier because it, you know, I try to say the same things every year. I don't, you know, well, I can say from here, this is the first year I didn't have to deny a project that came in in the budget. But they, that staff wanted to do, this is the first time. Normally, what happens is once we start getting all the personnel costs put together, usually, it looks like when I start the, I mean, I, I literally, I spent a whole month on this and I don't really do anything else. And I start seeing, you know, I start putting all the stuff in that I need to put in. And you'll, you'll see, oh my gosh, I got a ton of money. We're gonna be okay, we're gonna be great. And then next thing you know, once all the personnel, once, once Laurie and Sue do all the personnel costs and those get thrown in, normally it's like the exec, it's like, oh, now I gotta scramble and now I'm pulling back. And, and this year, I didn't have, I mean, I didn't have to go to Dan and say, okay, that project you wanna do, can, does it really have to happen this year? Could we wait a year? I may have asked him that for one project this year, but I ended up keeping it. But, you know, usually unfortunately, a lot of times when it gets to that point, the projects that get cut are parks and, are the parks and, you know, maybe the library. You know, things, because I mean, I'm trying to make sure we get money for roads and I gotta make sure police have what they need. And this year I was able actually to get, I, I mean, I think once we have a better idea, we lowballed the marijuana excise tax number. But I, 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 if you saw my Friday memo, I sent you, they're projecting one point three billion dollars in sales this fiscal year from, from marijuana, which means I think our, I think our, I don't, I'm not anticipating a drop in our, in our, uh, per facility allocation.
I thought originally you thought the state was gonna play games with that.
Right, no, I still think they will, but. I never, I never said they wouldn't.
You guys are getting too much.
Yeah.
Well, one thing about, about you guys and your budget, I mean, I don't know what it's increased this, this year, you want three point five?
What's that, Tom?
Your total budget is what, three, five?
Yeah.
Which is what, ten, maybe ten percent higher than it was last year, was it three, two or three, three?
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it gradually go from three million to.
Yeah.
Five, it's not like you guys are doing a, a, oh gee, we're, we're gonna go seventy percent increase next year. You don't, you don't get those huge type increase, so your budget has to be.
No, we gotta make sure that our expenditures track our revenues.
Exactly, right.
And so if our revenues, I mean, we, we try to track our revenues a certain way. This year, I mean, let's just, let's face it, the amount of money we gotten from the, the state and feds this year, I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely playing a role into, into the, into what we're spending and what we're, what we're getting, taking in. But the, the, the fact of the matter is, is that we're, but we're also seeing new revenue. You know, just take the, take the CARESAC money and the federal money out. We're seeing new revenue we've never seen before and it's quite significant. It's gonna, my thing is it is gonna allow you to put maybe, you know, let's, we've always put a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in local streets every year since I've been here. This year we upped it to two fifty. My thing is next year, maybe that's three hundred. And it's gonna, you know, it's gonna allow you to do, you know, we're always gonna have, you, you should have, have roughly, I would say that the general fund total revenue probably should go up about fifty thousand dollars every year, which is about what you're seeing. As long as the economy doesn't go south, you probably will see that, you know, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a modest increase every year, it's a couple percent. And, but you're also gonna have every year, your, your total, your, your personnel costs are never gonna go away. I mean, they're, they're always gonna go up because you, you, you know, maybe you'll have employees retiring and you can bring somebody in at the lower rate, but eventually that's, it's definitely always gradually built. You know, person, you know, and our, you know, what we pay our employees is definitely in market with what, you know, our comparable communities do. We probably pay a little bit more because we're in Kent County and a lot of our comparables are, you know, in more rural counties. But you know, we, we, we're, I mean, our, what we provide, you know, our personal costs, everyone's, you know, people always think that, you know, we, government employees make way too much. Well, we pay what, we pay what our comparables pay. So it's not like we're paying more than say DeWitt. You know, we're paying, you know, DeWitt's got, maybe DeWitt has less employees, maybe they have more employees, I don't know. But it, you know, I, I think for, you know, our, I think our costs are in line with what we do. I, I, I really do.
With that constant increase of, of property value, home property value, what do you anticipate to see that this year? Or is it not gonna roll in until twenty twenty-two, do you start to see those property values? I mean, people are listing homes at two hundred and thirty near.
You're, you're, you're seeing it now.
Forty thousand over.
Yeah, you're seeing uncapped, you're seeing, well, you're seeing the uncapped proposal A. With the, once these houses sell, you see the uncapped proposal A, so.
Right away.
You're seeing it, I mean, it, I'm seeing it now, but you gotta remember like, you know, maybe you sell, maybe, maybe fifty houses in the south, in the city sell. It'll, it's not gonna look on paper, it's not, you know, it's not gonna look bigger than what, you know. Let's say, let's say my taxable, but like perfect example, my tax, taxable value of my house. Taxable value of my house is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. However, the assessed value of my house is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and I probably could sell it for three twenty. So when my house sells, it's three hundred and twenty, it's three hundred and twenty thou, so it's, let's just say it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than what it was taxable value. So when that uncaps, it's prob, I'm just gonna do the math. I'm just gonna do the math, and an eighty thousand dollars increase, let's say an eighty thousand dollar increase at fifteen, fifteen, who's seven mills, no. Let's just, yeah, you're, you're looking at about on that ten thousand, on that ten thou, you're only see, you're only seeing about maybe two thousand dollars in actual taxes more coming to the city from the sale of that house.
Yeah, times fifty.
Right.
It adds up.
It does, but you know, it, but then you also have, but yeah, then you also have all the other homes that are only gonna go up one percent. So it.
Until it sells.
Right, exactly. Then a cap, and you hope it, and you, and, and the, and the other problem you have is even when it uncaps, it may not, it may not uncapped for what you sell, it might be, the taxable value of it may be, you know, let's, even that eighty thousand dollar difference. Let's say the taxable value of that, the taxable value of that is only, say forty thousand higher than the, than what the assessed value was uncapped. So you're only getting, you know, so you're only getting, you know, even if it sold for three twenty, doesn't mean the value of the house is three twenty. The value of the house might actually be two ninety, you know, based on whatever, you know, whatever valuation they use. So you're never gonna get, you know, you're never gonna get the true capture off the, off whatever you sell the house for. But we are.
Yes.
What's that?
The pot, the sale of commercial property.
It has inflated the, yeah, it has definitely increased. It, it, whether you wanna say it, you could say it, I'll just say, you know, in the short term, it probably has inflated the number quite a bit. Which is why we're getting a heavily override.
What with that? Anybody else got anything else? If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Support? All in favor by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we'll see you guys Monday night.
See you Monday.